I guess, uh, 6:31 and we do have a forum, so we'll open our October 12th Planning Board Meeting. Just to note, this meeting is being recorded for broadcast on local cable TV channel 192. And then 192 and YouTube and who knows where else. Okay, first thing we have is minutes for our last meeting.
We don't have Tamika?
This is Tamika Murphy up there.
Just making sure.
She's hiding.
Just making sure. I'll move the September 28th minutes.
I have...
With a question.
I have a... Do you want to go into discussion?
Yes.
I'll second it with discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Go ahead.
On page three, down in the second long paragraph there, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight down, and it said that Tim inquired about the handicapped accessibility when actually it was me, so I'd like to change the Tim to Marilyn. I don't get my name in here too often.
All right, my question I have is on page one. With access from road as well, it is noted that Karen Way remains undeveloped and is still considered private. Did not the town accept part of Sherland Drive, Karen Way, and I believe, I don't know if there was one other one too also, so that the town could plow it? It was at a town meeting. I don't think it actually happened. I may be wrong. I know there was discussion about it. Because I remember going, I remember going down there with what's his name, D W.
Is it the cul-de-sac and question where Karen Way would have connected to Prescott?
It was the houses that were there already on Karen Way.
Right, so it goes to the end and then to the right is a fifty, I'm not exactly sure. You'd have to go there fifty foot, a hundred foot, little stretch of...
Yes, correct.
So is that considered Karen Way is the question?
Yeah, correct.
And was that accepted as a town road or is it just plowed like other areas and not officially a town road?
Because of the sewer and water that is on it. And I believe in order to...
Yeah, is it? Edith Lane.
Edith Lane, Karen Way, and Sherland.
I'll tell you, I'm almost willing to bet Karen Way was not included in that. I may be wrong. We'd have to go back and see the warrant. Like I say, I know there was discussion about it and, you know, I know particularly there was discussion about the condition of the road surface on Edith, that it was going to require some maintenance very, very soon.
Yes. So anyways, the only thing I can do is, I was going to talk to Anita about it.
Yeah. We'd have to get her to look that up to be certain times. Like I say, I don't...
Well, let's... Do this.
Want to hold these minutes for the next meeting?
I would suggest to hold any of these minutes for the next meeting.
If we could check with, maybe see where, if it was just transferred in ownership, there must have been some documentation on what was purchased, right?
Well, see, the rest of the property, the town was going to sell.
Right, so the town owned it at one point.
Yeah.
So what did the town own? What was, you know what I mean?
So that's...
Who knows?
Yeah, it's a slippery slope, so I feel that we'll hold it until we get clarification. I withdraw.
Agreeable?
I would agree.
Yeah, make motion to hold the minutes until our next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on that? You in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes. Did it? Let's see, A and Rs. Okay, first one on the agenda is Hillside, yeah. Which I think is the big plan that we have a copy of.
Plus, I think we've got a new smaller, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the plan that we have there, we see it probably talking with the package shows the access onto the proposed building lot. Shows a driveway accessing the site.
But the plan that was stamped, I feel is wrong.
I'm, I'm on the applicant's here to make the presentation.
So can I talk to them?
Yes, yes.
Just easier if I can see. So basically, I bought Picky Lemon's old house from his widow. Picky passed away.
Which is?
Picky's is right here.
Way up on the hill.
Way up on the hill. So there's a common driveway that services his.
Used to be his mother's.
And this is Kevin Wermey, here, and this is our wife. So, so yeah, this used to be his mother's. So this driveway goes up here now. Basically, what we did was we separated, made a lot in the front, and we still have enough frontage to give, so that Picky's is a lot. That's all. Everything else stayed the same.
Parcel B was already there?
Parcel B was always there, yep. So that will be, he's buying that. So that's going to eventually go to him, but right now, this has to be approved before I can do that.
But what I am driving at here is the fact that this line here, give me a moment. There's a house up here. This lot, the frontage is here.
Correct.
So this line here is solid line that goes down through. It should not be dotted. It's not an easement. It is going to be a solid line because they're not for him to have the proper frontage here. It had to be connected.
Well, that's, this is, this is the way it was always. We didn't change that line. The only line we changed was this.
I know you changed that, but this plan shows it wrong.
Well, this plan was just, this is an approved plan that's recorded. The only thing that's not, this part of it's recorded. This part of it is a change. We didn't change this at all. That's on record now, just like that. It is.
Then it's wrong.
Well...
How come it doesn't show, you know?
I don't know, but that's what...
Right across, because this line came right across here.
This is Algoose frontage right here. Algoose House on Main Street. It goes like this, and then it goes like this, and it goes down to Algoose House.
Right, but is this line on this side or is that line on this side? So I'm asking...
This, I don't know anything about this. I didn't touch this. I didn't change this.
Well, this is the plan that was stamped, so therefore I was hoping that you...
This plan is on record though, I apologize. This plan is on record, and it's shown as an easement.
But it can't be, it has to be a right of way.
I don't know. This says easement, but I'm telling you right now, that is Algoose frontage right there. But I think this is it, Dickie, isn't it?
Yeah, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be on there.
I don't think this is on his plan. I think it's on Algoose's plan.
And Eugene, it was, here it is right here, so...
Yeah, but this is, see, this is Algoose House right here. So it comes up like this and it goes down like this.
I know.
And then it gets the rest of the frontage that it needs from here. So you've got some frontage here, and then some frontage there. But this had nothing to do with this plan. We're not changing, we're not changing that at all. The only thing we, the only thing we did was create a lot here and create a lot here. This, this doesn't have...
Is it?
Could this dotted line represent five feet and the other side was five feet and that's where your ten feet came from? And it just didn't show it on that side because it's on that plan?
I have absolutely no idea.
You know?
Again, I didn't touch, I didn't touch this. That's, the only thing I did on this was this, right here. That's it. This, this plan is on record as it's shown, like this.
What I'm just kind of wondering is if the reason it's not showing up is that this plan isn't showing far enough down.
Yeah, it could be that this, this is his plan and this is our plan.
Yeah.
That's what I think, actually. That's, it comes down like this, see, like he had it. See, this is the line. There's two lines here though, Dickie. See, there's two, there's two solid lines and a dotted line. See how this, see, there's two lines there. It's just hard to see on this small plan, but this is on the other side. No one's right. That's on the other side of the line. That's just an easement. This, this is on the other side of the line like that.
Excuse me, the plan is up here on the screen. Can we, can we talk to the plan? I'm not sure if everybody in here knows what's happening over here.
Yeah, see, so... See where it says ten foot line?
Do me a favor.
Yeah.
Right there.
How did Eugene get his power?
There's poles coming up there.
So that's why, because I remember poles, but I don't know why the access for utilities. So that's why I thought it was part of that plan.
But that, his, his, his line is on the other side of that.
Exactly. I think that's, that's the problem with the plan. It's just, it's just not showing.
But this is what, yeah, this is too solid and a dotted on that.
So that dotted line...
Funky lot.
Represents this.
Funky lots.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the plan?
I gotta tell you, ever seen a view from Picky's house?
Oh, yes.
My God, that is one of the most beautiful views.
Sat on his porch and I put it up.
Did he make you drink your Bloody Mary?
No.
He made me.
Just to verify, additional subdivision in here is not possible? Additional houses inside here or no?
No, I'm not going to put, I'm not going to put, I'm going to sell that. I'm going to put this on the market now.
As it is, one lot and then you're coming over here?
This lot here?
And then this side over here?
And this is already developed?
Right.
Yeah.
So this is just for one new house?
This is just for one new house right here, that's it.
And nothing different up here?
I'm not changing a thing back there.
Just verifying.
No Greylock.
Yeah. Is that what you can see on this?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was Menadnock. I wanted to...
No, Mount Greylock, New Brook Shoes.
That's Greylock you can see from there?
Yes.
Menadnock, you see down 56.
Yeah.
Right out here.
On Magoosa Road, you can see Menadnock.
Bear Hill too, you drive in one side, you see Menadnock, you drive off the other side, you see what you see. Got beautiful views over there, but not like that.
No, that, that was, I haven't updated spectacular. Anyway.
All right.
Anything further?
Move to indoors.
Motion, second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's that now?
Uh, do we have a mic right here?
I do, it's right here. We have a couple of those lights back for the file, please.
Dave, can you make sure the volume's on, on Zoom, please?
That's for the... Do you have an issue?
I just had it up, yeah. Can't get on.
Give me one second, I'll ask you.
Thank you. Can't hear, can't hear anything.
Tim isn't coming, yeah. Tim is not coming, so...
Correct.
Move that way.
Give it a little bit of space, no problem. I've got others saying we're okay, Dave, so maybe it was just one person.
I just asked if you indicate that they're all...
Swing it around. Thank you.
I can just walk on your own.
Ah, swing it.
Convince me.
I don't, but you know, we've got all four of us, so it should be outside.
I'll be waiting. And next we have A and R for Sharnik Hill Road.
No, actually, you've dealt with the A and R. It was for Woodside Avenue slash Sharnik Hill.
Oh, sorry.
For some reason it was rough as that way.
Yes, yes, yes. Don't mind. Oh, ho. We now have a continuation of public hearing for Javi application for AD Hillside Road. And I don't know, I guess, Kevin, I understand you have some additional information here or?
We did. We just, first I'll excuse myself from the board during this and then we addressed all the previous questions of the board and in the supplemental package I gave you, we have the correct book and page number. And then as we go through there, we have a map showing the outline of Hillside Road in regards to the side of the street. And I did some research and found that it's a variable width road, so therefore there's no solid documentation as to where the town property line ends at this point and the private property begins, which would be the question that Mr. Williams had in regards to MDR parking or APR land. So with that, I found that really it would be on the town's time and money to get that information put out there. So they would have to do a survey of the east side of the road. What I supplied was the west side of the road, which was documented with iron pins, which we're going to locate tomorrow, but it doesn't show the east side of the road. So with that, I also took an adjusted site plan and for the purpose of this site plan application, removed the parking on the side of the street regardless. But we, I did find out that there's no, there's no determination as to where the edge of the road is and it would be on the town to pay for the survey to prove one way or the other that it's town land and/or APR, private land. And that's why I have those two parcels in there, just so you know, the parcel maps show that it's a variable width and the 6.778 parcel that we're in discussion of.
Show whether that could be proved.
That's my whole point. Really can't be, so there's no requirement for any letter from anybody.
We're not scoring roads on both sides?
No. Wide open. And then there is, in regards to the waivers, we attach that as approved or recommended, I shouldn't say approved, as recommended by Mr. George. And then in regards to Mr. Narwell's comment on Mass General Law, we provided our original documentation from our attorney, which allowed us to legally obtain a farm brewer's license and then also our liquor license within the town of Rutland. So that's attached as well as a signed copy that we are in compliance with Mass General Law. So that should cover that aspect of it. And then I believe in the supplemental number three, we have Chief Nipe's approval of the site plan with some recommendations moving forward. If I were to have a tent on the property, we need to go through standard building code permitting, application processes, no weddings or any events will take place in the upper section of the main barn, final occupancies, all those types of things. So we're in compliance with everything that he's asked and his letter is attached in supplemental number three, or his email, I should say. I also gave Mr. George the other information and here are the photos that he requested, if anybody needs them, of our lighting throughout the property.
Great, thank you.
I didn't need ten copies of all those. And I believe that covers all the questions that were brought up at the previous meeting and the reasons for the extension to tonight. And I'm hoping that all this information will allow the board to make their final decision tonight so that we can move forward in our business.
Something I did not see. Seth's email in my packet. Wow. No caution. Somebody to do that.
Do you have the copy number before I have that?
Of the, uh, Mr. Chiefs, that was the only supplemental I can actually.
I have on some, but I don't really have.
I only have one copy too.
Pretty healthy bunch of requirements. I would guess. It is all fire safety and stuff. Oh, any questions, comments for the board?
Give me a moment.
No, you've been busy.
So all parking was going to be?
Right. We've done quite a bit down in the lower lot there, which is all on that 6.778. Just to extend it over. If there is, once we get it, again, I can have a site plan, correct me if I'm wrong, amendment made. We can come back and say, now we've gotten whatever requirements. We're done to show that this is all, you know, on the up and up. And I don't know if Mr. Buckley is on the, on the call or not, but he was going to look into, you know, the specifics of the center line of the pavement. And once we locate those, I, you know, you know, again, if I need to come back in a month and do another one, that's, you know, that's fine. But for tonight, I presented it as you see it and I removed those.
Approximately how many parking spaces is this total?
About 140, 20 to 140 down in this lower lot. There really isn't any limitation because I mean, if you were to come down, it's, it's a, it's a 400. If you look at this right here, it shows you actually specifically how much room I have to continue.
Right.
As you go down here, you have 430 feet, which from that there, which is roughly, you know, 100 feet, I mean, there's roughly 43, you know, there's a lot of land down there that can all be parking.
Almost an acre then.
Yeah. Is that the one near Emerald?
Yeah, you know where the old riding rink was on the property.
Yeah, okay. What is meant by no patrons will be allowed access to the interior of the lower level of the barn until final occupancy?
I'd have to check with the chief on that one, I'm not sure. This came through earlier on today. I haven't had a chance to specifically ask him.
So...
Those questions.
There's no patrons and occupancy, isn't that a... Finance is the same thing. An occupancy is a patron. So is it wording or is it, I don't?
Could be help.
Could be what?
Help. Hire help.
Just don't... Just not ringing. Final occupancy permit? Did you, what's your terminology on that?
I guess my question is, is there some part of the site that you're not able to occupy with customers? Does that pertain to the barn?
Well, the whole, well, are there areas of the barn that people don't go in? Yeah, absolutely.
Right, because you're limited to outdoor activity.
Exactly, so...
So I think, I think you'd have to make some kind of improvements to the barn to get it fit for human occupancy.
Right.
It's probably means final occupancy permit.
We, right.
So it should say occupancy permit?
Yeah, I suppose. On the board, anything else?
You have everything that was requested?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Except for one thing, if I could just ask, Kevin, can we just mark up the approximate location of the tent that's being referenced here?
There is no tent.
Would, would there be a tent?
Not anytime in the near future. I think this is specifically just in case of a tent. I have absolutely no plans as of right now to put any tent on my property.
So did we come back and modify this?
Right. If I were to have a tent, then I would come back under these guidelines.
All right, fine, I didn't know if you were.
No, no, I am not looking for any, any sort of tent or additional, I mean, in all honesty, where, you know, season will come, this winter, we're not gonna be putting up a tent before winter, maybe next year.
So simply modify the site plan when the time comes. So if the answer to the question is we have everything that's been requested of the board previously and the additional information that staff has requested.
I would make a motion to approve the special permit.
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on a minute. Uh, first of all, any questions, comments from the public?
Yeah, there are, that's right. Guess if you just wanna maybe talk to people on, watching.
Okay, anyone joining us remotely that has any questions or comments on this issue?
I don't see anybody indicating that they wanna be spoke, uh, heard on this, I believe. No one's unmuted, so I guess I'm not seeing anything, if anybody has anything, just feel free to unmute and request to be spoke, uh, to be heard through the chair.
Once more, anybody attending remotely have any questions or comments?
Are they all muted?
Yeah, they're all muted.
So can they unmute themselves on this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have no more questions, comments, yes?
You make the public comment here, you only ask for them, is that correct?
No, no, anybody.
Randy Jordan, fifty-one Muscat Park Road, but I guess at this moment, I'm probably speaking on behalf of the ag commission. If you read the site bylaw that Kevin kindly gave me as you came in here, am I correct to interpret the way I read it that someone is supposed to talk to the ag commission in regards to this or not?
Dave?
Let me just get the bylaw real quick.
Planning Board, Community Development Office, by notifying the building commissioner as a right to use, it has thirty days prior to commencing use and leave. Oh wait, above it, the print's small and my eyes are getting older, I apologize.
I can, I can speak to that section. If someone was looking to get an advisory opinion prior to starting the process, that would be an avenue to do that. Otherwise, if we had confidence that it was a site plan review, uh, we would just go straight to the planning board.
Okay. Some of my concern is an ag commission, uh, we are not often looped in on things that, whether we can or cannot give an opinion, whether it's sixty-one A papers or something like this, that we have the ability to do that I just feel part of the ag commission. I am not chair, I'm a member of the ag commission, that we feel we're being left out.
If I could, Dave, on that, I do believe that, uh, it was eighteen months, two years ago, we had very specific meetings in regards to all of these site plan reviews, A, B, C, D, E, F, all the way right through, and it was reviewed by the ag commission at that time.
You are correct, Mr. Derby, but my concern is, under my interpretation of this, is I felt this potentially, your application should have potentially came to the ag commission if there was any ag site review commission to potentially do it. That's, I'm more talking in general, not necessarily your specific case. I feel left out and I guess I'm a little tired of the ag commission being left out in regard to this, is this is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this particular site thing is a ag site review, because you could do this as a personal one if you chose to, but I believe you chose to do this as a ag site review, so I think the ag commission should be in regard, you know, should be included a little bit more of.
And I, I, I would agree, and I think moving forward, you know, being that, keeping in mind, everybody, that this was and we are the first, not only Rutland might be one of the first ten towns in Massachusetts to have an agritourism bylaw passed through the Attorney General. Alta Vista Farm is the first farm to submit an application, to take an application, to go through the whole process. And with that being said, there are things that I think a hundred percent should change for the second, for, for this purpose, um, the fact that the ag com wasn't notified, I don't think it was necessary or required and.
I, I think you tend to be right on that. I think going forward on any other ones, we're working through this process, as we're early on with this process, Kevin's first in because he was first up with his operation. So I think we're learning a whole bunch here and we will be making those course corrections as we go for any future ag accessory requests that comes before this board. So we apologize if, you know.
If you're unleft out, withdrawables.
Duly noted.
Site plan versus special permit?
No, site plan approval. So Randy, you have something else?
Now, Kevin had spoke about a few things that he had been requested to do, and I'd like a point of clarification. Uh, the fire chief asked if there was a tent to go up in the future that he had to do a permit. Correct me if I'm wrong, you do have tents to go up for musical entertainment, which are ten by ten size-like events. Am I correct or inaccurate that you need a permit for a ten by ten building, a tent?
I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Since only over two hundred square feet?
Must have.
No, it's a one hundred doing of ten people or more.
Located on the plan, the proposed site for a temporary or permanent tent, more than four hundred square feet.
Okay. In the past, when the fire brigade has had to get a tent permit, if you read the law that I had interpreted before, it was a ten by ten in doing it. All these farmers markets that set up their temporary tent legally, if potentially more than ten people can be under it, the way I interpreted to it, so it may be different in this particular.
That's as it written on the first, the first, first line on there is four hundred sque-, four hundred square feet, more than four hundred square feet.
I'm wondering if he's citing Chief Knight, state law versus?
It was the building for the town of Rutland when I lived in, it was a number of years ago.
Yeah.
It was the town of Rutland building permit to do it, because I thought pulling up a tent for a temporary tent is unnecessary.
And again, for this purpose, I'm not putting up a tent, but you're right with the canopies, if it's considered, then we can check with him and.
Yeah.
We haven't even been using them as the sun's down, this, you know, so at this point.
We're not approving that anyway.
Right.
So, um.
I, I just was making a point.
Yeah, yeah.
What was talked about before. I mean, I have an opinion about the road, if we wanna move on toward the road and, you know, legitimately so, whether it's A P R or the town, that's here or there, none to be said. I think it's more of a consumer, concern of traffic driving by. I have gone by with a piece of equipment when there's an event going on, a fire float or something, and when there's a fair amount of traffic, it gets challenging, right? But I think that's all things that could be worked out to, you know, improve on, and obviously you've got your parking space, uh, that you're dealing with all there, but, you know, parking on the side of the road, whether it's A P R or the town, it doesn't really matter in my opinion, but there's a lot of things that used to happen in the past that probably still could happen today if nobody complains and everything's okay, but I think as a whole that we're, we're trying to advocate town, business coming to town and making it more successful. We're not here to detriment what Kevin's trying to do, we're trying to work together and I think, well, I talked to Kevin earlier today, and I think everybody should have the same rules and regulations and timing of doing things, and I'm just, you know, is that happening or not? I can't, you know, speak of it, I just, uh.
I'm just thinking about the, I, I said to put up a tent, you had to get build, had to get a permit from the building inspector?
That is correct.
Okay. Cause the town has no town building code. They simply use the state building code.
That's exactly where it would come from.
So it must be in the state building code.
It's in the state building.
Now, I'm gonna assume that Seth looked up the state building code.
It's highly likely. I know that there's a certain, I don't have the citation at my fingertips, but there's a threshold for where building permit's not needed and where it is. Now, the building permit ties to life safety, so the loggia is, or if it's, it can be enclosed or if flammable's can be brought in, those are parts of the standard. Uh, I think there's a breakpoint, I don't think it's for an ordinary tent size. I can look into that question for future, you know, reference for any other condition that might come before this board.
It'd be good to know for sure, but it would almost seem as though that's gotta be part of the state building code.
I was just very surprised of it being as low as it was, and I just, A, I wanted to make Kevin aware of the situation that, you know, if you're gonna put up a forty by a hundred tent, then obviously you need it for a permanent thing, but realistically, for the small tents, you have to consider it, right?
Interesting, so.
Now, none of the outside structures are currently used for the events over there, I mean, the corral area or any of that.
The overhang, yeah.
The overhang is using?
Right, but there's no sides on there, so.
Now, did this particular board ask for engineering drawings of that to warrant the weight and structure of that?
No.
Okay. But, I mean, I may have been in a meeting and a different person doing similar to what you're doing, and they asked for engineer drawings of their plan of a similar situation, is that, you know, where I'm going with this, and I'm not putting one farm against another farm at all, let's get that extremely clear, right? I don't think either one should have to do it. My question for the board is, why was there another farm in town that I heard with my own ears that they needed engineering drawings from an engineer that's a stamp to say this existing building that already had people in it needed to get a stamp? Now, if, if Kevin's using the overhang, which is perfectly fine, don't get me wrong, but why is Kevin not asked for the same engineer drawings coming for that?
I can comment on this, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
That has to, the question that here is related to a building permit to be issued for a structure, not the site plan review. There's been no other ag entity that's been before this board for a site plan review, that's a building code issue.
Yeah.
And that there's a building code requirement that needed to be met in that case, and that's why that information was sought. Just like in this case here, there was building code requirements for a deck, which had to be met, and also for the interior of the structure not to be usable because of the building code requirements, but that's not site plan, that's a different proceeding, building permit outside of this board's purview.
So in other words, that permit never came before us.
That was a building code matter, a building permit matter.
That is the building inspector.
Yeah.
What was it? I guess where I'm going with this is the town of Rutland, right?
Oh, yeah.
Whether it's, it's different or not, and I, I'm not, I'm not, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get consistency of the town of Rutland as a whole going forward.
I promise you, that's what I'm doing too.
Correct, Kevin.
You gotta believe me, that's.
And, and what, where I'm going with this.
But we gotta start somewhere.
It makes me very upset that what one has to do, why doesn't the other one have to do? And I realize it's different. If David George is correct, and Fargo, he was at the meeting, it was far more understandable from him because he understands this, right? But my challenge is, is what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and it's just, I have a tough time that we're trying to make improvements in the right direction in this fine town of Rutland that I'm very proud to live in, but one minute, you know, you want another business to come in and be successful, and another minute, you got another business that you wanna shut down because they don't have the right permit in it that came before this board that I have a challenge here with, right? And I realize it's regulations and all that, but for a hundred years, we as the town of Rutland have encouraged businesses to, to succeed and go with there, and whether you got a piece of machinery parked in your yard or not, and I would like some consistency in life.
Well, the, the other thing you're just gonna realize is that, you know, different departments have different jurisdictions and.
But within reason, they should be similar.
Yeah. In some cases, they can't be.
I was saying, not necessarily. I mean, if it's a, it's, if it's a building issue, a structural building issue, that's not generally, at least in my experience here, and I'm not familiar with all the laws, but it's not generally a planning board issue, would be a building inspector issue. You said that there were other times where the planning board had ruled differently?
That was in regards to the business, just, you know, the business that you talked about a couple of weeks ago about a gentleman parking a skid steer in his yard? You know, we're trying to promote business, but yet now we're, you're trying to promote business with Kevin and what he's doing here, but then this other business that I'm referring to, and I'm getting, I'm leaving the topic at hand, which is inappropriate, right?
Right.
But yet you're telling this gentleman with a skid steer parked in his yard, he can't have it there because we don't wanna promote a business because the neighbors don't like it, right?
No, that's not what we ruled.
No.
Oh, I, I don't know what you ruled, but I know the general discussion that was floating around town, it was something.
Probably similar to that, but it was not the planning board rule. The planning board, we, you know, we've got references from our law, law department, and we have ruled on whether or not he qualified for a home off, home major occupation.
Okay.
And he didn't. Like, I mean, he wasn't doing any work out of his house, I mean, he was parking his vehicles there, so there were rules, you know, we have talked pages, several pages of what is considered a major home occupation, and he didn't meet any of them. And I tried, believe me, I did come up with some reason that, okay, oh yeah, you're doing this, you must be having a business here, but he didn't.
Okay.
And you, as you said, it's off the subject.
Right, off the subject, but I'm just talking in general is what I, the planning board is here, wanting to encourage more businesses to be successful, and Kevin and his team is trying to do everything right to minimize the headaches going forward, but yet where I'm going with this is, we're promoting over here and we're demoting over here and on different reasons, and legally you may have to do that, but again, we're not here to talk about that.
That, that's exactly it.
And, and where I'm trying to go with this is I want consistency, whether it's the board or the town as a whole, working together to go forward for the well-being of the, of the future of the.
I would just like to make one more point for the chair.
At the end of the year.
All the boards in town look at different things, so we're ruling on different aspects of the, you know, the, the, not, of not the business per se, but the running of the town. So a one board might rule something on, on one aspect of it, and another board might not have any jurisdiction on that. I mean, there's a lot of things that we don't have jurisdiction on because they come under other boards.
Okay. But if you lead, if you read this, we just talked about the ag commission, how, what the building inspector was looped in on this on some aspect, may not be the engineering drawings that we're talking about, but yet the building inspector was loomed in on it. I mean, when you get a building permit, you have to have a handful of people check off, Seth Knight checked off on this, right? So he has an opinion about it, he talked about the tents, he talked about the building, right? The building inspector checked off on Kevin's situation, right?
Mm-hmm.
And in turn, should he have asked a question similar to the other farm in town? I don't know.
I don't know, cause we'd have no idea what he was gonna use the building for. I mean, we couldn't even be comparing apples and oranges here, apples and cows, apples and whatnot.
I do have to agree with you that, uh, I think probably the ag commission should have probably been approached at least and asked to weigh in on this, you know, you know, earlier.
If it, if it wasn't an ag permit that Kevin's asking for, then no, absolutely not, but where it's an ag one, I, I just, I, I think we should have been included.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily visualizing another one of these coming flowers to us.
Well, honestly, I hope there are. I hope there are several coming to us. I'm hoping that everybody listening right now that owns a farm and wants to do something there that gets, gets going and gets these submitted in because.
Well, maybe you will.
I think it's gonna help the town of Rutland, I think it helps our agritourism, I think it helps us grow moving forward, I think it helps protect the farmers moving forward, ten years, twenty years, thirty years down the road, getting these things documented, allowing the farms to do additional things makes a big difference for the future of this town, of my farm and all the other farms. So I'm hoping that there are more of these coming forward quickly, to be honest with you, and I'll help them get it going.
Love to see Jerry Kristoff open up, uh, use the old tractors, you know, come down with your kid and sit on your tractors.
I'm trying to work with Dick Schultz to get him going, I mean, he's, you know, he needs help with this stuff, I'm trying to get him going. I talked to, that was part of my conversation with Randy, I got an application right here for him, I'll go through it tomorrow with him, get him going over there just in case he wants to do something. So I think that there should be more coming forward quickly, and I think moving forward, getting ag com involved and other things, it's gonna help, I think, for the sake of tonight. for the sake of tonight, for right now, I'd love an approval from the three members of the board so that we can move forward. And then as the next application comes through, we all work together to improve the communication within the town and improve the businesses and get the other people involved.
And just for your original point about the ag commission, I totally agree with you that we should have, you know, approached you and asked for your, you know, recommendations and the information that you, that you have that we could, you know, could have been relevant to this project.
Do you think, do you think it's, I realize Kevin would like it tonight, right? But for all fairness, right, is there a way that you could potentially ask the ag commission? I mean, you hate, maybe I'm wrong, right, but yet Kevin, could you wait till, you know, another meet, you know, in two weeks or wherever you have a meeting?
I would say no.
But is it, is it?
I would say that the amount of.
Because, because you've put so much time in.
I, I don't think you understand, and I know you've been through this. You, you've dealt with commissions and everybody else and everything else. The amount of time and effort and energy that has been put forth by me, my wife, I can't, I can't get another delay, another delay, another delay. I know I'm the first guy in. We could delay this for eight months because somebody at the next meeting, Mr. Jordan, is gonna speak up from Conservation Commission or from Open Space or from the Business Development Committee or the Town Administrator, and then we're gonna keep going the more, I understand the need for these things moving forward, but every time that this is delayed, it's already been once, if it's again and again, we're setting more and more precedent to just allow this to keep getting delayed. We need to, in my opinion, make a decision tonight and then move forward with amendments on this process afterwards, because for me to continue to, it's, it's, um, I would ask to not, with all due respect, delay this anymore.
My rebuttal, is it fair that you've waited a long time and you've, you've held some new road and have been there and done that on different projects? So I understand the frustration of doing it, but is it fair that you asked for, to put it through tonight, right? And Randy Jordan puts in an application tomorrow, and then Randy Jordan has to wait thirty days because now it's maybe a good idea, whether the planning board chooses to or not, that's yet to be determined, right? But yet, is it fair that Randy Jordan has to necessarily do that step that you didn't yesterday?
Well, Randy Jordan could have put it in a year ago. Randy Jordan could have been
Right, the first.
On top of this and doing it like I've been doing it. I'm the one who's done this. I'm the one, you know, that made that post today. I'm the one that talked you through it. I'm the one that educated you today. So is it fair that you haven't done what I've done and you, you know, are gonna be behind by thirty days or forty-five days? I don't think that that's my fault. I think that I paid attention. I helped Mr. George from day one. Everybody on AgCom saw the agricultural bylaw that got passed at the town meeting. Everybody got a chance to read it then and knew right then and there that there was site plan approval needed. I submitted everything. I paid my five hundred dollars. I got my butters list. I did everything that's been required of me, and I've been delayed more and more and more, and like I said, you can, we can, you know, it's just gonna, it's not gonna stop. And that's why I'm asking that tonight. We get an approval, and then moving forward on next site plan applications, we can work with them. You know, I'm not here to try to, um, I'm just here to help everybody, this whole, everybody that's a farmer in town is gonna benefit from this, being approved tonight. It's not gonna hurt anybody, and the town's not gonna get hurt by not approving it tonight. For an additional review by the AgCom or additional review by other entities is just gonna delay the process.
But do you think that it comes, when it comes in to the planning board, that it's sent out to the ag commission at that time? Or should it be written? Because it's, I don't believe it's written as such to where it should go. No, you know, it probably isn't, and I, I don't wanna cause any more controversy about this, but Randy, I've gotta, I've gotta put, gotta try and put a shoe on the different foot. When did you learn about the Javi proposal?
When Kevin posted it yesterday on Facebook.
That's the first you've heard anything about it?
Yes. I can honestly tell you that your planning board last time that it was on, Kevin told, we spoke about it today, but Kevin didn't. I called, you can ask Kevin. I called Kevin today to ask, to understand what he was trying to accomplish tonight. So Randy Jordan, as an individual or an ag commission member, had not heard about this. This bylaw absolutely came to the ag commission eighteen months ago, and Kevin came for multiple meetings to have a discussion about it, but Kevin's actual proposal here tonight, I never knew about it before, really, Kevin and I.
Many other members of the AgCom did.
Could very well be, absolutely, yeah.
Didn't discuss it, well, didn't discuss it.
Well, and I guess the point that I'm getting at is if some members, you know, of the AgCom did know about it.
They could have asked to see it or whatever.
Then it was, it would seem to me it would have been appropriate for some action on their part to contact the planning board.
This is not the first time we've met on this. This is not the first night that we've discussed this. It's been on, on our agenda for several, several meetings, and we have discussed some of the things that you mentioned, like parking on the road and access and all that kind of stuff. This is definitely not the first time we've seen this.
But in my defense or other members of the ag commission.
You should have been notified.
No, no, we're not Mr. Williams and know exactly what's going on in town and go to thirteen meetings a week on that, so. You know, shame on me for not being involved and knowing what the ag commission should or shouldn't be doing.
Right.
Is where I'm going with this, you know.
Going forward, how can we get, get this to them?
We take it as a lesson learned. I'm sure Dave will make a note of this, should another application be, we will do that.
Well, word is on.
You know, it's not much, maybe not much different. You remember the estate lot special permits that expired?
Yeah.
And, you know, we have decided now that we do need to keep track of those things and at least notify the holders that they are about to expire so they can rid of them. Same thing. Something happens, so you learn from it.
The town of Rutland as a whole on notifying committees for sixty-one A power properties, right? If you go to the town of Holden, the day the town is known about a sixty-one A paper property wanting to come out, whether it's an acre or a hundred acres, it doesn't matter. Right? They notify the town of Holden Ag Commission immediately because that starts that ninety or a hundred and twenty day time going forward. This town, the town of Rutland, whose responsibility is it to notify the ag commission to do it? I can't tell you whether it's, whether it's the selectmen or the town administrator or someone. It has never come and it's been spoken to multiple times about that. I mean, prime example, down here at Mr. Davis's property right here on Main Street. What was it? Two days before it was gonna go to sale, we had a meeting here to, to see how we could help to do it all? There's challenges like that. Where I'm going with this is, it's a, it's a problem as a whole, right? And we haven't, we've asked for changes over there on just sixty-one A. It has nothing to do with this permit. It's just, there's gotta be better communication amongst the boards here.
I would agree with that, but I also just wanna say in rebuttal too that, and I know myself included and other farmers in town have been notified by our planner in regards to this process, going back to the beginning of the year. So the same farmers that you're referring to have been well aware for seven or eight months that they should have gotten their paperwork in. You may not have specifically, but you haven't been doing anything pertinent to a site plan application. And I have to believe that if you were actively, then Mr. George would have notified you that, you know, this is something that you should be doing.
Can I say something? Please, Blair from Rutland here. First of all, in Kevin's defense, and I'm not taking sides here, but it wasn't required that he come to you, so for them not to vote on it tonight is not fair. I've sat sitting in his chair a lot. It's, it's not fair. It's not fair. I mean, it's not required, so it's not done, but I'll tell you what. When I submit a subdivision plan, there is a list at right at the beginning of who I have to submit that plan to, and that's probably the way this should be set up. I mean, I have to have ten copies. It has to go to the board of health, it has to go to the planning board, it has to go to this, it has to go to that, and I don't know who hands out the copies, but it's the way it's set up, so. For the future, it's probably easy just to add a line to the bylaw that says.
It's seven copies instead of six, right?
These copies, they're supposed to be delivered to these boards, but as far as right now, tonight, you bang it back and forth as much as you want. Dave said it wasn't required. He didn't do it, but I don't know that it should, uh, stop the vote. That's all.
I get it.
Yep.
My rebuttal from Mr. Blair, right? I haven't been in his shoes and I don't regret those at all. I've been sitting up there at, at all one point, but my concern is, is as I said before, that all of a sudden Randy Jordan puts a permit in and has to go for that process. Is that fair to application number two? And now Kevin already said Randy could have put his application before. Randy hasn't. Randy believes that, that, you know, maybe I don't need one and why do it, right? But I'm trying to get some consistency in the town of Rutland. That's all I'm trying to do.
I think the only way to get consistency is by the second application. I think it's hard to have consistency when it's only been done once. There's nothing to be consistent for, other than the agritourism bylaw as it was listed, the site plan application as it was listed, and I went step by step by step by step, and I provided every bit of information that was asked of me. I got signature from everybody needed. I got every plan. I did absolutely everything that was asked of me. And now here tonight, I'm asking the board's approval on this site plan application.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I appreciate all the comments. The comments have been acknowledged, and when we do this the next time, we will have a smooth process. You know, with Mr. Javi going first here, we've identified some of the issues, so thank you for everybody for the comments on those things.
The only thing I can say is.
What are you trying to say, Dave?
Exactly. Move the question.
The only thing I can say is that we, we will always try our best, whether it's Mr. Javi, whether it's Mr. Jordan, that we will treat every applicant in exactly the same way to the closest thing that we can. Okay, that's consistency from the planning board.
And that's all you can control.
That's right. So, you know, beyond that, I can't control what the town administrator or the select board does with sixty-one A applications or any of that stuff, and I'm certainly not gonna try.
But I'll tell you one thing, we'll notify the ag commission after this.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any more comments from either the board or the public? We have all the information. We have requested, required.
Yes, once again, the application is complete. All the relevant information to make the, make a positive finding of that have been submitted, as well as additional information requested at the last meeting. I am confident I can write a decision that actually captures everything the applicant's trying to do here, with the reference to the plan and all the other pieces of information.
Then I will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I will, excuse me, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is anybody interested in making a motion to approve the site plan request?
I will make a motion to approve the site plan request.
You've got all the stuff.
I do.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask if I can, now that we've been approved for a special meeting, potentially, I spoke with Mr. George and he can get the application processed, finalized, and signed. If you guys would be available either next Monday or Tuesday, so we don't have to wait the continuation of the two weeks till the next meeting. And I believe there were some other agenda items that could be taken care of at the same time.
Yeah, just to flush that out. I have other decisions that are in the progress of being drafted for other matters, and those decisions will be ready within a week as well. So it would be immediate to handle multiple items of business.
Am I clear? Mr. George's plate a little bit.
Okay, if it's Tuesday, we can't have it here.
And if it's Monday, you can't have it here.
We can do it after Community Hall of Annex. I believe it's a very quick meeting to sign decisions. Should take more than a half hour or so.
I'm just thinking, I don't, I don't have any conflicts, either of those, so it's up to you two.
One o'clock.
I can do one o'clock.
No, you can't because.
No, I can't. Tuesday, one, no, I can't. I gotta, I gotta keep helping straighten out our regular bylaws on Tuesday afternoon.
You're right, the farm bylaw is being worked on Tuesday at one o'clock.
Yeah, actually it is.
The Tuesday at noon.
That, first of all, that definitely eliminates Tim.
Yeah.
Right.
Nighttime?
I can do it Tuesday evening, but not Tuesday day only.
Next Tuesday, ag commission meeting. I have an ag commission meeting next Tuesday.
See how easy you got it? So, like I said, it's up to you two.
I can do it any evening. I just can't do it Tuesday afternoon.
Monday evening?
Yeah, what time?
I don't know, six, six-thirty? I don't even go any earlier than six again. That would lift him out of it.
Six-thirty?
Monday, six-thirty. Let's do it.
Thank you.
The board of selection probably thank you. Board of selection probably will thank you because they're gonna meet next Monday, or?
That's their business.
Well, it's not gonna be mine, I guess. I won't be going to it.
Oh, okay.
I thought they were opposite this time.
Didn't meet this week.
Okay. Well, Kevin, you can rejoin.
Thank you.
And we next have a continued public hearing on Brentwood Estate subdivision modification. And I don't think we have any new.
Come in.
Do we?
Yep.
Vows?
Oh. Yes.
Yeah, you have a couple of items we want. October fifth, house to responses to the Hannigan correspondence and follow the original correspondence.
Before that, I just wanna note to you clearly that one of the things that we found is that you are definitely changing a number of lot lines.
Yes.
And it is, I believe that those lot lines have to be changed by the A and R process before we can approve this modification from plan. Otherwise, we would be signing a plan that has, that has lots that are not approved. They're different from.
There's a plan that, yeah, but that's, it's not about lots. The stuff on here is about like pipe and.
Yeah, and that's it, but along with the certificate, we sign that plan.
And I got problems with the plan too.
What plan do you sign?
The bylaw that, with this. We will be signing that plan.
For open space?
For every subdivision.
But this is, this is already signed though. Well, I'm not asking to sign any plans.
Dave, I think we have to. It's a new plan.
Well, you'd have to sign an A and R. I have A and Rs, but I haven't submitted them yet.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying is you need to submit the A and Rs before we can approve this modification to the plan.
Well, I'll bring the A and Rs with me then next time. I'll bring them up to the town hall in a few days. But this stuff here doesn't really, some of it might pertain, but-
Yeah, but the problem with the public hearing that we're in now, it was specifically written to address only three items.
Right, and Kyle came up with a million.
And one of those items was not a change in lot lines.
Well, that's just on through an A and R process.
Yeah, that's right. So the order is important.
It's really the ways that we're talking about. We're not talking about lots.
I've got problems. How the heck do I get openings to get to the open space? You have no way unless you're showing this as being the open space to get to it.
It's right here. Right here. Get in right here and you can get in right here.
Okay. And connection to the trail.
Where's the trail?
Over here.
So that's why you do that?
Uh-huh.
You want an easement there?
Because of the least, what, right here?
So you want me to add an easement, an A and X to this?
Yeah, you can reference to the special condition.
Make it extra wide too.
Go, what is it? No, it's in the, already in the-
In the plan.
Well, in the regs.
Oh, right. So what I, what I asked for at the beginning was no islands in the cul-de-sac, HCPE pipe as opposed to RCP. And there was one other-
Reduction of the road width at the crossings.
At the cross. All of those things, I mean, are really-
Yeah, that's still fine.
But then he came up with all this stuff. Kyle did.
Uh, let's put it this way, I can't, I cannot understand why you would not have to file with the courthouse this new plan.
I do.
Yeah. And can you file it with the courthouse without their signatures on it?
But no, it's just an A and R, no. It's all I need. I don't need a new plan. I only need an A and R plan. Plan's already approved and already recorded.
The plan for this lot configuration is approved. The plan for this lot configuration is not approved.
That's just an A and R.
Yeah. And that's all I'm saying. You gotta do the A and R before we're going to sign.
You know, I'm not asking to sign a plan. I'm asking for waivers, but on that plan, this is the only plan that I have right now. I don't have any A and Rs. I don't, this plan over here, I don't have any. It was five years ago, Hannigan gave them this plan instead of this plan. What we did was we eliminated this lot here, 53. That's, there's nothing built on that. There's a detention point on that now. So we took one of the, we added a lot in here and took this out. So that's how the lots changed. And this is what he did to do it, to gain it, right at the end here. But, I mean, that, right now, we're not talking about that. We're talking about that. I'll bring an A and R in. I mean, I intend to. It's a lot. But I don't know, I don't know what I need for a plan to get, to get those waivers. I mean, I wanted to get those, this stuff in front of you before, you know, we had a site full of people that, you know, actually you recommended me do it that way.
Well, yeah. I don't know, that, let's put it this way, that's my opinion and I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. Like I say, I cannot understand that he is not going to have to submit a plan to be registered in the courthouse showing this new lot configuration.
Well, I do.
When would that happen?
Well, it's just, it's an A and R. It can happen at any point. I mean, I'm not even building this now.
So what you're saying, just so I can clarify, the original plan in the past was approved, submitted-
And it's recorded.
Right, and then you put a detention point in one of the lots, you moved it over, so now you've got another plan. Same amount of lots, so with the A and R provided after the fact, does that cover the plan?
But the shape of several of the lots has changed.
This isn't about the lots, it's about the ways. And I'm not putting plans in on the way, I'm asking for some waivers. I mean, basic stuff that we, you guys have been doing right along that we wanted to get in front of, which was HCPE pipe as opposed to RCP, not having islands in the cul-de-sac, which they don't want anymore. And none of that stuff was, was an issue. But then we submitted plans to Kyle and he came up with this list of stuff and we've been banging back and forth on this list. Maybe if we could just talk about, I'll bring the A and R in, by the next meeting, you'll have all the A and Rs. And I, and we're not going to, you know, make any decisions tonight, but at least if we could, you know, get to the bottom of that. But I'll get you the A and Rs. And I'm not, but I don't know that it matters at this point, but I-
I have no problem going through these things.
Okay.
But I guess I would, I would like a consensus, well, I guess an opinion from Dave and a consensus from the board as to whether I'm marking at the wrong tree or not.
My main question would be at the end of this all, A and Rs done, houses built, what's going to be recorded in the courthouse in a year or 18 months? Because as long as, I look at it, if the five of us sitting at this table aren't here in 20 years and somebody's looking at a plan, what's it going to show, right?
Well, let's just put it another way, just even for, for our own use, okay? If we don't, let's say if we don't have to sign a plan, we probably won't necessarily even get a full-size plan showing this lot configuration. So if I years down the road, someone comes and takes a look and they say, hey, wait a minute, where are they building this house? Hey, wait a minute, they're not building a house here. They are building a house here where there wasn't a lot, when they look at the plan that we have on file.
Which is that one?
Which is that one?
So I can see what he's, you know what I mean? So is there going to be a whole new plan filed?
Well, first of all, the planning board's charge, as you know, is the safety of the ways. So we're not, I'm not changing a road at all.
I realize that, I realize that.
So I'm, I can come before you anytime. I mean, I've got plenty of A and R plans in Bryce Estates right now. The full set of plans, I changed and modified them at your request and I replaced the pages that you have. But I don't have to do that. I mean, as you know, I build houses in a lot of towns and I just, I submitted A and Rs in Shrewsbury as early as, I don't know, a few months ago. And I didn't change my overall plan, I just changed an A and R plan that goes on record. Lots change all the time. And they will hear. I mean, I'm not going to lose a lot. I'm going to make that configuration work. But right now, alls we're talking about are roads and what's going in the roads. It's, we're really not even discussing, with the exception of lot count, and I showed you why, that there's even any real discussion on lots. You're right, I need to change them and I'm going to. But, and I'll bring them in for the next meeting, but I don't know that they have anything to do with today.
Because we can still talk about them.
And I understand what you're saying, because down the road, yeah, a neighbor could buy 12 feet from another neighbor.
Oh, yeah.
So that lot can, so you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So this plan absolutely in 20 years could be different and they could not be recorded just because of a corner, somebody wanted to build a shed, they're going to sell you this one. So I just want to make sure, figure it all out down the road. Those A and Rs would supersede the original plan and at least if somebody does the digging on it, it's all recorded properly.
The roads are what?
The roads don't change.
Roads don't change. With an A and R, it's approval not required supposedly, right? Because you're not looking for any road configuration change. So that's all. I mean, that's all I'm saying. And like you said, no, I see what you're saying. It's not the same lot configuration. And I'll bring those in, but I didn't know that I needed to have them, to do this, but I will bring them in.
Dave, you want to weigh in on all of this?
I'm here just recalling, so Bryce Lemon, Phase 1 and Phase 2 has several A and Rs. But the only time a new definitive plan was submitted that needed a signature was for Phase 3 with the road layout, when the roadway alignment was changed for Phase 3. That required a specific signature because the way was being altered. You know, in the other cases for Phase 1 and 2, the way was not being altered, it was just simply the lots were. So I think what we need to do is just have a way to do housekeeping on this so that when the A and Rs are granted, we have the final definitive plan that's the current plan of record. So we go into the plan set, we know that that's the final plan with the revision dates and the revision reasons. So I think it's a matter of just swapping out the plans. Now, if the roadway alignment was to change, then we would need a new plan with a signature that gets recorded with the registry deeds. That's what happened with Phase 3, unlike Phase 1 and Phase 2.
So as long as the roadways aren't changing, the lot configuration can change and a plan can be submitted to the town of Rutland at the end of the-
At any time.
At any time. That's the final configuration.
Yeah, but the thing there is, is housekeeping, to make sure that we have the final plan of record in the plan set.
So we don't have to go hunting through all of our A and R files.
And if I'm not here and you're discussing it, then you know, at least you know you have the right one. I get that. All right, so number one was the lots, the amount of lots. So it was 33. We eliminated lot 53 in Bear Hill 1. So we added a lot. We will be adding a lot. We haven't done it yet, but we will be adding a lot in 2. So that's how we got to the 34. I assume everybody is okay with that.
Okay, changes in grain pipe material. Says developer engineers should submit information to identify the imposed material is adequate, particularly in locations where blah, blah, blah. I don't know, I know we've allowed this change a number of times. I don't recall us requesting.
Kyle asked us for it, we gave it to him. And this was outside of this. And, I mean, HCPE pipe is used all over the place. You only need a foot of cover on that stuff to drive over it with H20 loading. I mean, that's tractor trailers. So, I mean, it's, it's good and it's light and it's, the towns love it.
Did you say you had submitted?
I've given it to him thousands of times. He's got it.
Okay, so you must have a copy of it.
I sure do and I can give, I'll give it to him.
Okay, that's easy enough. Okay, number of lots, that's been explained.
Yeah.
The number of culverts in the roadway cross-section dwellings has been revised, roadways are- I still don't understand why he's saying this. It says the sidewalks at the wetland crossings are proposed to be cantilevered off the wall.
They were. We're trying to eliminate that. So what's happening is-
I was going to say, the plan that I remember seeing didn't look to me like they were cantilevered.
No, but we, in order to achieve the ADA compatible sidewalks, we would have had the cantilever. Unless we squeeze the road down to 20 feet. I thought we could get away with 22 feet. 20 feet, we saw the cross-section is as wide as I can make it. What he's saying in here is, you know, the 20-foot width is consistent with the width requirement for a residential sub-collector. So he's saying it's okay, as specified in the rules and regs. But he said, you may wish to check with the fire. I did check with Seth on the 22-footer. I never said anything about the 20-foot because I didn't know about it until a few weeks ago. But I don't, if it's, if it's consistent with width requirements for residential sub-collector, then as far, as far as I'm concerned, it should be fine. And I've requested a waiver, so, so he's saying, and this gets back to the lot configuration, we have revised it, we haven't A and R'd it, but I have one A and R for here right now that I'm ready to submit and I'm going to have this next week, so I'll have that. So catch basins.
Yeah, this one is, to me, is kind of interesting.
Excuse me a second. So what's the basic comment for item above? The lot configuration, open space have been revised? It's a general comment, I'm just trying to keep- On the plans that I gave to Kyle are these. And it shows the new lots, how they're going to be configured. This is the plan that's on record right here. So the plan that's on record only shows 33 lots. We reconfigured it to get to the 34 because we eliminated one over here on Bear. No, I get all that. I was just wondering if the board had any particular take on that or needed anything else?
No, I was, I, I think I'm understanding, yeah, I understand it.
Thank you.
So the thing, obviously where some of these lot lines have changed, the open space has changed, the configuration of the open space, that's all. Okay, catch basins. And I'm just, you know, I'm looking at the 250 versus 483.
So you're not allowed to move drainage through a Zone A. That's what he means by surface water protection regulations. That's the Zone A. So if there's a bank, and they considered, like, because the land was flooded one day, they considered that the whole thing was a bank. So where the crossings are, there's Zone As. You can't run drainage, or really sewer, but only because there's only that one place you can, you can go through with the sewer to get to the pump station to get the sewer up. But the drainage can't run through a Zone A. So what he said, what we did was we pitched it so that the water will come from the top and go this way to this catch basin and that way to that catch basin. And it won't stick in the road, but it won't be conveyed through a Zone A. We went through this on Bryce Estates, I don't know if you remember.
And this is primarily the water from the street?
Yeah. Yeah, and what, you can't have-
Going underneath the road.
It's, you gotta remove 80% of total suspended solids. It's a big deal with snowwater management. So, you know, that, we had to do it that way to meet their regulation, is why that's like that. It requires a waiver. It's not going to cause any puddling or anything like that because the road's been designed to pitch.
How do we handle this one? Because that once again was not mentioned in the notice as a modification.
Do I request a wa, I have to request a waiver? Well, I think if the board is aware of certain things, there's been waivers, the board's lost into a decision, that's one issue. If you think it's a field change, that might be another way. Or if you have a need to have the applicant do another notice, a legal hearing, that would be another way. I guess really what are we looking at here? And what's influencing the change in the 250 from 483 to 250?
Well, it's the surface water protection regulations, at least according to-
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the hard requirement, but if the hard requirement is backed up with some reason that you could justify to a, you know, some change out there in the field, then you may, you may do that. You may want to have the applicant request a new legal notice with anything else. I think it's really, we probably need to look at that further and get a handle on why that changed. I think you just heard why the change happened. There's a change in the mapping for the Zone A protection area.
I do need to request a waiver and I haven't done that. So at a minimum, I need to request a waiver.
Yeah, the question is how to do it because we, the board had a specific legal notice for three specific hearings that we understood needed hearings prior to Carl digging into this. When Carl dug into it, now we're finding other things need waivers. I think the question-
Suspend it.
It's a matter of form, you know, can the board-
Can't just amend it, no.
With, where you've had a legal notice out to the public identifying three specific waivers. So it's a matter of, of style to handle. Additional waivers that were discovered after the fact, that's going to be the question for the board here.
I'm kind of on the fence. There's a field change.
If it's considered a field change, do you have to have a new?
No. Field change, we can just-
We can approve here, don't need to get anybody else involved.
I think justification has been shown how it's going to be done.
Or why it has to be done.
And why it has to be done, correct.
And that would be explained in his waiver, right?
Yeah. Well, you know, field, field, I think field changes are usually kind of reserved for when you run into something unexpected. Well, I don't know, was the change-
We can approve here, don't need to get anybody else involved.
I think justification has been shown how it's gonna be done.
Or why it has to be done.
And why it has to be done, correct.
And that would be explained in his waiver, right?
Yeah, well, you know, field, field. I think field changes are usually kind of reserved for when you run into something unexpected. Well, I don't know. Was the change in these, the water protection regulations unexpected? I don't know.
It wasn't there before. When you approved it, it weren't there.
Wasn't there there.
All of a sudden, you know, they changed. Well, no, they changed all their maps. Through the time when they had the moratorium in town for the sewer, so I couldn't build it. They changed all the Zone A maps. Now it's a Zone A. And it never was before. Thanks, DCR.
Was it DCR or was it?
DCR changed all the maps, but the DEP enforces.
I think I could go with a field change. And I don't see any safety consideration. Okay, I don't see it causing necessarily any problems. Granted, this'll. There's. There's almost no steep roads.
It's flat.
It's flat.
It's dead flat.
So it's not as if you've got a great big hill. Otherwise, really gonna be collecting and rushing down. So. You don't know.
So I'm just, right there, it's in the wetlands.
Yeah. I don't know.
It seems to me that if the, because they changed the maps, then it would be a field change or reaction to that.
What if we just have Joe approve it?
That would not be a bad idea.
Right, he's pretty sharp on that stuff, the drainage stuff. He really is. It's good. So if he says, yeah, it'll work, then fine. If he says, no, it won't, I'll do what he says.
Get a letter from Joe.
There you go.
Good idea.
I think I can buy that.
In terms of the board addressing this one, which ways the board going here?
Uh, field change, I think. As long as DPW.
Approved, yep, I agree.
Alright.
I like to be picky, but sometimes. Okay. Stormwater basins and drain, drain piping have been revised. No further content, as in the system.
The, the, the ConCon reviewed all that.
No further content.
See, that once again, it used to be a hundred years, wasn't it? And now they changed it to twenty-five years.
Well, they make it designed two ways, too.
Okay.
Yeah, now that.
Are you on the replication area? The sewer changes minor. They just adjusted the pitch of the pipe, so. You know what, you know what it is over the crossing, the pitch? Point zero-zero-four. Talk about flat. So you, ConCon, you good with that one, with the level spreader?
Yeah.
ConCon looked at it. The.
You see it out of the conditions?
Yep, they, yep.
Dave, you have that?
It's on record.
It's on record?
It's on record, yeah.
It's all recorded. The replication area, they doubled it, and they made us move it. And by the way, we've already built it. Because we took, when we did the wetland crossings, we took the soil from the wetland crossings, made it, put it in the replication area, and we didn't have to buy wetland soil, so it worked out good. The wetland line changed over time.
The roadway grade has been revised very slightly. It's a minor. Dry wells.
The DEP, to the best of my knowledge, does not allow dry wells any longer, dry wells.
This orphan alternative was gonna be proposed.
Yeah, they, they, they have to, you have to put those, what's called the infiltrators. It's almost like building, like in Bryce Estates, we have on every lot, except for Phase One, we have an infiltrator system where the gutters run into this, the infiltrator to infiltrate. That's, that's what. Originally was, here was gonna be dry wells, but the DEP said no to those. So if we need to have more infiltration on the site, we're gonna have to do it by that, with the cul, the infiltrators. But there's already been a revised stormwater plan that's already been submitted to Kyle when we did, through the ConCon, they have it. So, but if there is issues on the lots, it's really up to the building inspector anyway. I mean, it.
Is each lot, just from my own knowledge, because I'm not, I'm not kind of privy to this, those gutters that go into these infiltrators, are they connected lots to lot, or they all just go into the bed? You know what I mean? They just, each lot is by itself. They're not somehow connected going into these detention ponds and everything else.
No, that's correct. You're correct. Each lot is by itself.
You basically put some gravel and some pipe and just spread stuff out around the house.
We do have infiltration for the site that we've tried to get as much as we can through the drainage system in the site. But beyond that, if you don't meet it, you have to meet a certain criteria. If you don't meet it, you have to accomplish it by putting it on each lot separately.
Okay.
By the way, the, I think we, the Arrowhead Way, Nightmare's gone away. Hopefully. I told him I would as a settlement. I told him I would do that way back, and and he agreed, and then he didn't. I don't, I got, not happy.
Your problem.
Same please, everybody.
Okay. I don't see the.
We haven't had any, I haven't called at all.
This is, the board may want to develop a clarify, how the driveway will be tied into the new drive. So I guess if, if there's any other issues, would that be, again, we talk about even, you know, this person, individual is gonna complain, is that gonna go to David McCray? Like individual complaint, you know what I mean? Like how would we be notified or?
Joe would get me that, but in this case, I can tell you that over there, what they did was they put in a driveway. And when they put the driveway in. They put their new driveway in, they tied it into my road. Let's find the picture of it. You'll see what I mean when you see the picture. I just gotta find. Alright, so. Here's my road, and here's their driveway.
And you're going parallel at this point?
The road goes perpendicular to the driveway. Here's their driveway.
Right.
Here's my road. It's about ten feet. I couldn't, I couldn't connect the driveway. I had to tear it out.
So you just went through it?
I had to go through it, but I, I put a new driveway in over here. I'll show you. See, see what I mean? See, see how long it is?
Yeah, I guess the only.
That doesn't exist over.
And you bet out there, right? You've driven there multiple times. So is there an issue with the town who's plowing what? That'd be my only question is.
Oh, no, we're plowing the road right now anyway.
But then moving forward, is there gonna be an issue?
No, not there it isn't. Here it was because the driveway was.
The way it was there, but now you fixed it, so the town can plow, the homeowner plows their own, the snowbowl's their own. We won't be entering on other people, okay?
Okay.
And we have the fake box culvert. At MassDOT. Have we got that?
Oh. Kyle, right now it doesn't meet it because there's too much cover over it? I don't know if you saw that email from Kyle today.
It was circulated, yeah.
Yeah, so right now, we're trying to revise the road grade so that we don't have as much cover over the culverts. Astro says five feet. Right now, it's like six-point-four feet. I'm trying to revise the road grade.
Okay.
So if I can do that, then I can get him to say it meets with confidence that it meets Mass DOT. However, he doesn't, he's not gonna be, he's gonna do the footings. So he's gonna inspect those, but the guy that designed the culvert's gotta, has gotta come out. When the culverts go in, he's gotta sign off on them. The guy that designed the wall's gotta come out. When those go in, he's gotta sign off on them. And I don't wanna have the same thing that happened to me in Bear and Bryce. We had to go back and do that all over again. I told everybody, you don't put anything in the ground until the structural engineer said it's okay, period.
So it seems that only thing in play here are the three waivers that were originally requested. Is that right?
Yeah, this is, this other stuff. To me, the other stuff is, is just.
Alright, so there's no need for a new advertisement because the original waivers have been aggressively added, and nothing else is being added to that list.
Right.
Okay, good.
And the only thing I have to do is I submit to Kyle the HDB specs, and I'll get a letter from Joe about the spacing on the.
And get the ANR notes.
The ANR and the waiver, whatever way they didn't.
And of course, all the structural stuff I know. Okay.
Okay. Do we still need to continue, I think?
Yeah, because if you're making a decision dependent on ANRs, that's a reason.
Yeah.
And if the board wants to take its formal final action to vote the waivers, that would be part of the next decision.
Okay.
If I could just ask for one thing. Can we request the final action deadline to November thirtieth, so I can write the decision with enough time?
Yeah, you're gonna commit, submit, you're gonna go to the next meeting for, for the public hearing continuance, and then time for decision to November thirtieth.
Set up.
It's fine with me. No problem. I mean, it's already really approved. The only thing I wanna make sure of is when I build the, I wanna make sure the twenty-foot road is okay with the crossings. That's all I'm.
Just treating this like a typical definitive song division.
Perfect. Fine with me.
Alright, good.
End of November.
So move the time.
Yeah, I think that's not too much longer than what's ordinarily allowed.
Continue till when, David?
The hearing to.
The hearing to the next meeting, right?
Yeah, and then the time for decision to November thirtieth.
So the next meeting is the twenty-sixth, October.
So in essence, you could close the hearing, next, you can close the hearing next meeting, and you don't have to make a decision until November thirtieth.
Then they would approve it.
Right, at some point, yeah. But you don't have to make the decision. Next week, you can wait till November thirtieth.
Correct.
Right, and then you get it all drafted and, and it's signed up, whatever.
Six forty-five, I think, yeah.
Sounds okay, Norm. Six forty-five.
Sounds good to me.
I just wrote that seven o'clock. You wrote seven. You had to stay longer.
Oh, good.
Motion to continue this public hearing until October twenty-sixth, seven PM.
And also request for the final action deadline to November thirtieth?
Final deadline, November thirtieth.
Yes, please.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The extension on deadline now expires.
Uh, I can't, sometime a hundred and thirty-five days from July seventh.
Oh, thanks.
Sometime in the middle of November-ish. I don't have the calculator for that.
My one-year anniversary from having COVID. My birthday. And my birthday last year.
From when, when was the beginning?
The hearing, I don't know.
When was the beginning, you said? We received the submission with the town clerk's office on or about July seventh, eighth or ninth? Originally.
July, well, it's either July sixth or thirteenth, rather.
Sir?
I thought it was earlier than that.
If it was, it would go back to June. Till the twenty-second, June twenty-second.
It was July.
It's a planning board.
See, a meeting was July thirteenth.
Yeah, but we've received. The relevant date for the purpose of this matter is the date the application was submitted to the town clerk.
Submitted to the town clerk.
That's really when.
But, okay, so you don't have this.
Well, it was submitted to the town clerk on July seventh or eighth. Alright, thanks, Norm. Is this eleven-thirty? Eleven?
Yeah.
What did that, what did that?
It looks like a ten to me, but. Sorry.
We're in ten, and you're writing eleven, aren't you?
Now, it looks like an eleven.
Alright, good, thank you.
A messy eleven. Okay.
As of today, it's ninety-seven days if it was July seventh.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Maple Hill Estates. We have a report from Quinn. We got more than one?
Yeah, you have a surety estimate revised.
Right, there was two.
Every court.
Five.
And then you have a subsequent report relative to painting of the road and the condition of the road after being. The first correspondence would be October one.
I don't recall seeing anything specific in this one.
Except it used a lot of, a lot of ink in the printer.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have any comments on the October first report?
See how nice it came out?
On those?
Except for the sidewalks.
Yeah, I think they fixed it today.
So, assuming the radius.
Oh, I, I know. What the hell is that? It's supposed to be the drain for the water to go in.
Is that? That's the outward control structure. I forgot, it wasn't in yet.
So I'm just, I wondered what the, doesn't seem like a hell of a lot.
No, it doesn't. Yeah, so what, the water would have to build up there after four.
And went in, yeah.
Not a lot of height, hope. There's not a lot of water in a small yard like that.
I haven't seen, had any water there anyways.
I haven't seen a drop in that detention pond ever.
So, then we have an October eleventh report from Quinn.
Now that one. The sidewalk was the one big thing on that, and you say it's being taken care of.
They told me they were fixing it today. I hope they did.
And he also observed some puddling.
You know, Donna, yesterday to find it, there was a little bit of puddling, but I mean, I don't know how much. Can't be too high to fix.
Oh, oh, you know, again, I don't know how high something like that is.
Sometimes it makes more of a mess fixing.
Well, I was gonna say, would it pay just to roll it again or pound it or?
Maybe just an infrared.
No, this was the wide, would they just lose it, just right up there?
The only thing that is bugging me a little bit about it was Phase One of Bryce Lemon. Where we went round and round with a couple of the homeowners. There was some puddling at their end of the driveway. Realized this is not at the driveways, but, 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 but.
It's a big area. Right? Wouldn't you normally have a culvert, you know, some, something in the middle with another?
Drainage?
That seems like a wide.
Usually, usually it pitches from the middle out, and then, and then it comes.
You know what I'm saying? Okay.
Catch basin. You don't make it so it pitches this way. You make it so it rolls off.
A little dome.
Yeah, but I'm gonna check with, Tommy Larson said we should see what Joe Buckley says about that. And if he says it might make more of a mess fixing it, fine. If he wants me to fix it, I'll fix it.
But, how do you?
You'd have to put some tackifier on it, and you'd have to put a little bit of pavement there, maybe infrared, it wouldn't be a lot of work.
So are there, I can, maybe you can show me here where the, where are the drains right now? Right?
Right there.
Right.
And right there.
So if that's the puddling, and, you know, over here, you know, could a small area be just be taken out, and that's?
I think this is a dip.
You can't reduce this, right? This is, this is what it is, as far as the drain, right? You can't really change the height of a drain easily, so to speak.
You can, but however, we leave it at base coat, and we pitch the top coat into the catch basin so that we're, we know that we're not gonna have it higher than it. So this, these little puddles right here.
Those bumps are the.
We might be able to take out with just a little bit of pavement. I mean, I, I don't know.
And in all honesty, I had a conversation just today with Director Buckley and Assistant Director Kalofsky about a groove right on the edge of the berm. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna come with the, whatever machine, and just put a little tiny groove so that all that water is not gonna be channeled right down. The same thing I'm dealing with on my road, because the berms weren't big enough. The berms, there wasn't enough.
I don't know if that would option it.
It may, it may not be, but...
We're gonna bring Joe out and see what he says, hopefully he'll have time.
That's about the only thing I see on that before, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, uh...
You know I submitted for road acceptance, right?
Yeah. And...
You have a surety estimate?
We also have a surety estimate.
I think that should be the main package.
Make the...
I apologize, that's in the supplemental package. Item 5.
31,943.75.
He gets a lot more for his plans than Julian does. Julian's half that.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know, anybody have any problem with this, move, bond them out?
No, I do not.
Trees are going in tomorrow. They're all there. Trees are all planted on Bryce 2.
Oh.
Planted them today.
Yeah.
And how many are gonna be there tomorrow?
I don't know. So, we, we check with the homeowners first.
Back 25 feet in somebody's front yard?
They didn't call the police on us this time.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, nobody has any comments, except the motion to accept this...
Surety agreement of 31,943.75, so moved.
I'll second.
Everybody happy? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, any letter?
Is it possible if you just shoot me an email that it got reduced, my bank one?
I was preparing to write a letter.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
For the action tonight.
Oh, perfect.
Do that as soon as I can.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
All right.
It just says a refresh, it's as simple as that, Norm? It's as simple as just captured the port's action.
Just, yeah, we'll reduce the requirement.
That's what I recall from last time, it's been a while.
Yeah. So, okay, and then last page on this thing is we have the, the thing that we were talking about earlier about the meeting mass dot standards to be...
Yeah. Have you seen those, uh?
Oh, yes.
Have you seen the big coves?
Boy, those are...
Those are massive, don't they?
A block of aluminum.
Oh, my God. You know what those cost? $132,000.
Wow, holy Christ.
And the walls were 120. So forget the labor, right, and all the fill. You can look at 250 grand, just, just the materials.
I couldn't, I couldn't get over the, I call them railroad tracks, that they've got, as the...
Bridges.
Bridges.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
They're better than a bridge.
Oh, yeah, I am sure, I am sure.
It's a new form of Hudson Huts.
A bridge there would be over a million, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, the other thing is, who the heck were they talking to? Okay, there goes my brain, there we go. But the, the only thing I was just kinda wondering about was, you know, great, they're made out of aluminum, they won't rust.
But will this new chemicals that they're putting down, which destroys concrete, will destroy aluminum?
The thing is, aluminum and concrete don't mix. Okay? Concrete will cause aluminum to corrode in either way. That's why they don't use aluminum flashing on chimneys, they use lead flashing.
So maybe they put a layer of lead?
Well...
Between the concrete and aluminum?
And again, and again, like I can't, I don't know who the heck I was talking about. But it could very well be, because the, the footings will have a groove in them, they release the city, there's probably gonna be some kind of a liner that goes in that groove to isolate the aluminum from the actual concrete, whether it's a rubber liner or...
Yeah, well, the rest, there's no other concrete there, except for, we're pouring in the head wall around the top, so there's gonna be concrete sitting on the top, that's what those big hooks are for at the end, concrete goes all along the top of them. So that's what actually Mike Maroney's designed right now, so...
Anyway, just, just... Okay, I think that's it for...
I just had a question on that 7, the last comment, last paragraph, during our conversation, I told Mike that the town laws require inspections and certifications by the designer for the retaining laws, box culverts and footings to confirm that those were constructed in accordance with their respective designs. Mike indicated that it's not a way of requirement made sense for those to be provided.
So who?
What he's saying is, I, I didn't re, I require him to do it, I've required the, the guy who designed the, the actual struc, the culverts and the guy that designed the wall, they're gonna sign off on the culvert installation and the wall installation, Mike's gonna sign off on the footings.
Okay, in their respective times, right, and that's what you were saying before, he's gonna do this, he signs off, then he'll do this, then he'll sign off.
Right.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, because if it sounds like it's something new, it's not a requirement.
Oh, yeah, you wanna make sure that it's...
I wanna make sure it's in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you don't wanna have something caving in on your, you know, it's...
Okay, uh, okay, somehow we skipped over Bryce Lemon. Anybody have anything else on Brooklyn? Okay, uh, Bryce Lemon, we have an October 1 before, I don't see anything significant here, no roadway infrastructure was going on. I did take a ride out there today.
Must be TV inspected. If they start using the, the pipes in order to be tested, they have to, it must be TV inspected.
They want the sewer, he wants the sewer camera. But we pulled the mandrel there, so I don't know if he needs it, but he, he definitely wants the one over the, over the back of the...
And I still can't see how two detention basins are gonna be needed for Crown Loud after all the subdivision is done.
Where, at Bryce?
Yeah.
That's huge, this looks like a link.
Yeah, I know.
Should make it a little trout pond.
I was just gonna say, yeah, there'd be, as part of the open space, can they put some money aside to stop this thing, or what?
Better not, because next thing you know, for Christ, like DCI are gonna be going in there, we're taking this over, okay, you people are gonna have to pay us the...
Is that detention pond in open space?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So...
It's big, have you seen it?
Yeah, I've seen the...
It's huge.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
We put a rock right out in the middle of it, so the kid's got a thing to swim out to.
Let me tell you something, the kids were swimming in it before and I, now the water's out of it, thank God, boy, I'll tell you what, I wouldn't let my kid go in that thing, woo.
The parents were, were going absolutely up the creek because of no fence around it, no...
What the ground is like in there, it's gonna just be...
Like quicksand, yeah, awful. I would, plus think of the bugs and the worms and the leeches and the... Yuck.
I'll tell you, they got a bunch of very, very active kids.
Yes, they do. I walk on more than 5 miles an hour.
Cause I was, I was up there about, uh, just, yeah, right around 4 o'clock this afternoon, after my meeting, and my good God, there was... Had to be at least a dozen kids, and I swear, none of them was even six years old.
Wow.
Out on their bikes, roller blades and who knows what, in the middle of the street.
Bumming around.
All over the place.
Wow.
That's what the neighborhoods are for, right?
Don't need detention ponds, we need new schools.
Yes.
They built those before, they took Bryce Estates into consideration when we built Glenwood, and they've closed off some of Glenwood schools, so now, you know, we still haven't caught up to where we were before.
Anybody have any comments on the Bryce Lemon Estates report? I didn't see anything. There.
Nope.
I did not.
Bear Hill 2. I'll put one on Bear Hill 2, which I don't think...
Yeah.
We haven't done anything.
I have not been up there lately, but... I haven't been up there, but I haven't heard anything either.
Nothing going on.
Yeah.
We're gonna start doing the lecture.
Oh, you're still gonna do that?
Gonna put it underground.
Oh.
And then you gotta take some of those poles out.
I have no problem with what's going on up there.
Okay. Well, that's, I think that's all we've got for you.
Actually, maybe we should talk about the road, except the road requests.
Oh, yeah.
For Maple Hill and Bryce Lemon Estates 2.
I don't think it's gonna happen before, I don't see how it can at this point. They're talking about setting the town meeting for November 18th, and...
So when does the warrant close?
Tomorrow, it's close, right? November 18th is not even about the, oh, yeah, it's not even about the way.
I don't know, I don't know when the one closes, but...
It's gonna be soon.
The thing is, you know, whatever you've submitted to the select board, except now it's out for legal review, has not come back even. They have to lay out the ways, they have to schedule a public hearing with notice.
They got plenty of time for that right now.
We, we have to get the ASBIL plans, get them to Quinn to be reviewed, we have to hold the public hearing.
You do?
Yes.
I thought you just had to recommend it. Public hearings are held by the select board, not you guys.
That's to lay out the road.
No, no. No, it's for road acceptance.
They have, the select board has a meeting on the layout.
A public hearing? There's no other public hearing required, that I remember. He, he's, I've never been to a pub, public hearing on, on the planning board in any, you guys have had, you guys have to recommend. But he, can I, can I make a, just a quick suggestion about this? And it's only this way in Rutland, and I'm not saying that, but I build roads in Chalton, I build roads in Shusree, I build roads in Holden, Rutland, and the only place that they don't, put it on the warrant. It's, it's okay to lay out the roads and put it on the warrant, it's up to the planning board, and they do it at the meeting, whether they recommend, but they don't. So what happened last year is, we, we, we had to get everything done before you guys would recommend, and then it got too late, and, 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 you know, they called me and said, jeez, it's too late to put it on the, on the warrant now. Put it on the warrant and then just tug it off. It's, it, at least it's there, so, but if you don't recommend it, they don't, like, in all the towns, they just don't even bring it up. But at least it's on the warrant, so that if it get, does get done before, it's, it's, it's okay. And they used to do it that way in Rutland, but now they don't.
Right, they used to have a macro, a macro place for it, and that, you know, different things like that.
If they could do, if I could just ask that they do it that way, that way, I mean, they have the public hearing, everybody gets, it's on the table what it is, I'm, the, the ASBILs for Maple Hill are coming probably tomorrow or Thursday, and I would say next week on Phase 2. They're paving it, they're putting the sidewalks in, berm, they just finished the curb inlets, I don't know if you saw that, detention ponds...
Not that they raised some of them, I don't think they had them all done.
Yeah, no, they put the curb inlets in.
So, can I just, again, I'm from the beginning, right? What you're asking now is that we put it on the warrant knowing that you'll have everything in place?
And if I don't?
Before we actually see it all, because there's not enough time for us to look at it in two weeks or three weeks and then ask for it to be put into the warrant.
Well, like, in other words, if the, if the, if the select board says, we're not gonna set up a public hearing until we get recommendation from the planning board, right? So the planning board is gonna get the ASBILs from me, send them off to Kyle, he's gonna sit on them for a couple of weeks, because it's gonna take him that long to review them, and then he's gonna come back with a list. Well, sometimes it'll take me, especially at Maple Hill, I don't expect a list at all, but at Phase 2, we got detention ponds, we got, you know, we have water issues, we have things like that, so he's probably gonna have a list. But I'll have time to get all that done, and then, and then at the hearing, at the meeting, it's, they ask the planning board, and it, or, or before the meeting, it just, they don't even bring it up, which, that's fine. And that's what I had the big problem way back with Bear Hill. They wouldn't put it on the warrant and then, so that we could, we could at least have an opportunity to get it done, and I wouldn't have got it done, so it didn't matter anyway. But in this case, I really feel confident, the only thing I really have left it is, is to, is to do the, the pavement, finish a little bit of sidewalk, and, and those detention ponds are just about right where they need to be, I gotta put a little loam in the bottom, I mean, I put the bounds in, there's only like 15 bounds I had done in two days. I'm just, you know, and with the invention of the GPS, I mean, to get all the shots, it's like click, 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 it's not like setting up a transit, spending all that time. I mean, I, I just think I can have it done if they allow me to put on the warrant and have your recommendation come in at the end, rather than, you know, hold their public hearing and, and put everything forward, just, if you guys recommend it, fine, if you don't, live with it.
I'm still a little bit unclear about planning board holding a public hearing. I, I guess I could be remembering that wrong.
I don't remember you doing that. I don't, I don't, and we've never, I mean, I don't remember ever doing it anywhere else.
For some, some reason or other, I don't remember.
Did they put in the car before, which one, the select board or the planning board?
Select board, I know.
Select board asked them to hold the hearing.
They're the ones that have to hold the hearing with the planning board's recommendations or approvals.
Ahead of time, they say, but I, I don't believe that that's the case.
But we still have to get the request from the select board before we can move.
Right.
So you would be going this coming, one day?
I already went to the select board, I already went.
So should that be in?
No, 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 that, the next time I go is at the hearing. I've already, I submitted everything to the, to the town administrator for the select board, so I've asked for them to lay out the ways.
That'll probably be next Monday.
I'm sorry, Derek.
That'll probably be next Monday.
I think maybe sooner than that, but it's being reviewed right now to make sure it's in a formatic, would acceptable to town council. Then the select would transmit it to the planning board, then the planning board has to at least have a meeting on the matter, and we'll look into that detail tomorrow.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't...
But the meeting dates are dead, are, there's only two meetings left between now and the 18th of November, if that's what it is. Typically, these things take some time because it has to be a site visit, Quinn has to review it, there's some back and forth, so I, I, I don't know. I mean, we try to get this process going in eight, in eight, in August, to at least start the process, to start going through the pick list. I mean, now it's, it's October when the submission's made, and it's kind of a, it's a very tight compressed timeline for the board and for, and for staff as well. I mean, it's, it's, I'll leave it to the board, how you wanna proceed, just provide the direction you think is necessary.
I'll tell you, I, I won't give you any, any kind of a, not even a hint of a guarantee of it, making it onto the warrant.
Look, no, I don't wanna guarantee, but if I get everything done...
Peter Crain needs way, I, I can't talk about other town meetings, but I can tell you that Rutland Town Meeting by bylaw must address every issue on the warrant, you don't get to skip over anything.
Okay, so the planning board says we do not recommend it at this time, and it's gone.
Except that it's not because that information is asked after a motion has been made. So if the motion has been made to approve and the planning board, the planning board recommendation does not impact the motion on the floor.
So, so it's different at other towns, I mean, cause I know in Holden, they don't even bring it up. If, if it's on a warrant and, and the planning board doesn't recommend it, it doesn't, it's not brought up.
I, I honestly don't know anything about Holden's town meeting, I know our, I know our town meeting by law.
Yeah, which, if we give an unfavorable recommendation, does not mean it wouldn't be accepted.
Correct, also true. That's a process thing.
Well, that means I gotta get everything to you quick. Well, that means I gotta get everything to you quick.
And if I may ask you a, a, a different question. Uh, this is the last, this is the town's last opportunity, basically, for Maple Hill, so I have to ask, where's the CR?
George, it's in George's hands. It changed because of that thing in our last meeting. So he's working that into it. I guess he's gotta do a meets and bounds description or something like that.
Yeah, and he, he needs meets and bounds, and he needs any encumbrances, all the rights of way, all the easements, I should say, on the...
Right, so there's a new one going in for access.
Right.
We're on it. Too much to do.
Doesn't stop.
Well, thank you, everybody.
All right.
It's getting late, I'll get out of your hair. And I know Norm, it's gonna be tight.
Like I say...
I got, I got the, I got the memo on there.
Real doubts.
I know, I know. Hey, it doesn't make it, it doesn't make it. We, that way we're closing in on spring real quick.
Yeah. One could only hope.
Okay. Accessory dwelling unit information sent session. Dada, Dave?
Yeah, thanks. Given that it's getting later, I'll, this is information session one, so I'll try to be brief here. So I do have a quick presentation on this. I just a brief opening statement. So the planning board worked with the bylaw, planning board bylaw subcommittee, acknowledging from the public some time ago that there's a need for what they call accessory dwelling units in town, which are currently not allowed, except as a two-family, which requires a land requirement. This would not require a land requirement per se, but anyways, there is additional housing that's necessary that is not currently allowed in the current zoning bylaw. Accessory dwelling units are an alternative accessory dwelling that is attached to the primary dwelling or associated with the primary dwelling. As we'll explain further in the presentation, this allows for, for example, elders to stay in place in their homes, and for caregivers to be on the same site as elders and so forth. So basically, recognizing a need for this type of unit, housing unit, the bylaw subcommittee worked over several months to, uh, to work with staff to put together a accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So what's an accessory dwelling unit bylaw? It's a second dwelling unit on a lot. It's located in either the principal single-family dwelling or in an accessory building. And it contains separate sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. So it's a dwelling unto itself. It meets the definition of a dwelling unit, and it is a standalone dwelling unit unto itself. But as we'll see late, further on, there are some requirements that do make it accessory to the principal dwelling on a lot. So the purpose of the bylaw, I just briefly mentioned earlier, was to expand housing opportunity for residents at a variety of life stages. For example, the bylaw would help elders to stay in town. It would provide additional revenue to offset rising taxes due to increased values of their homes, and allow space for caregivers. But also provide space to support family members. In any of a number of situations, it would provide additional housing for those. I think what's happening here, and I, I do have some basic information, which I'll be modifying this presentation to, um, talk about the median, sales price for homes has increased substantially over a ten-year period of time. And the fifty-five-plus population has increased significantly over a ten-year period as well. So that's a big need for this. And anecdotally, talking with people who wanted to do this over the last couple of years, people said, why, why should we have to do a two-family? We don't have enough land to make it two-family, we don't wanna do a two-family. We just simply want to add on to an existing house, a smaller structure, uh, to make this happen. So, um, there's that need that we understand anecdotally, and the master plan survey has borne out some, some validation of the concept of accessory dwelling units as well. Um, bylaw details. Now, I will say, um, just to set this slide up. We did research with the building commissioner and the planning staff. We surveyed several towns in the Commonwealth, and we found that there were major things that they all had in common. One was the number of bedrooms, an area requirement, the look of a single-family dwelling, onsite parking, and owner occupancy. So what we see here are typical requirements of these bylaws. So what we're proposing is similar to what we observed in other zoning bylaws that we looked at. Would be a maximum of two bedrooms, and either one thousand square feet or forty percent of the existing structure. Now, I should say that what's being proposed are three different types of accessory dwelling unit. Number one is in the existing dwelling, without any modification or addition to it. That would be limited to a thousand square feet. The second type would be by way of an addition to an existing structure. In that case, the allowance would be forty percent of the area of the existing structure. And then the third type is a detached accessory dwelling unit. So those are the three types, and it would be either a thousand square feet or forty percent of the area, depending on the type. And it would be allowed in the R forty and R sixty zoning districts. Only, um, if there's a concern or question about, you know, would this prohibit residential dwellings elsewhere? The answer is no. Uh, the town center district and the village center district each allow for dwelling units by special permit. And depending on how much land is in play on a given development project, there could be multiple dwelling units. So this does not prevent housing in those contexts. Once again, it'd be maintain the look of a single-family. Uh, onsite parking would be required, and owner occupancy of one or the other of the units. Uh, the permit process, basically, it's, it's, it's a special permit. So the process would be an application to the planning board, special permit granted from the planning board, the decisions recorded with the registry of deeds, and then a building permit from the building department. Um, the background on this, so in 2020, there were conversations with, with residents, as we just mentioned, who identified a need for accessory apartments. Most of the folks who identified the need were elders. Early in 2021, we received technical assistance from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to provide a model bylaw. Um, and then after that point, we started the development of the bylaw itself, working with the building commissioner to, um, help us with the research on accessory dwelling units that exist in the Commonwealth. And then the planning board bylaw subcommittee, holding meetings from July twenty twenty-one until late October twenty twenty-one, to develop a draft of the bylaw. So the next steps, this is the information session number one. Then information session number two, October twenty-sixth, and then a public hearing on October twenty-sixth, special time meeting on November twenty twenty-one. In the meantime, we will be finalizing this presentation, distributing the, um, final version of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw online. Uh, we've been, uh, we distributed this information to the council on aging director and the library to see if they could do further outreach for us. Uh, if the council of aging is agreeable to a presentation to that constituency, we'd be glad to do that. Um, anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer those questions, uh, if people contact the planning office. So in summary, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw is a common bylaw to encourage housing options to meet the needs of various groups, including elders and others. Uh, most municipalities in Mass have such a bylaw. This type of housing option represents the best practice. And for further information, the information will be uploaded soon. It's not uploaded at this point, but that's the project over the next couple of days, and people can contact the planning office. So that's it in a nutshell. If there's any comments or suggestions or questions?
Is there anybody, and I believe there is, maybe there isn't, currently seeking this? Didn't this come up because of a certain individual that was looking to...
Jackie O'Brien.
Yeah, it came up because it was an individual, well, it came up, that's an example of it. There was many people who've asked about this. One in particular, a person had a, a home in a split zone. Um, but this was not in play yet. So the only option was to create a two-family. And obviously, to create a two-family, you have to have one point five times the area of the underlying zoning district. That particular lot did not have that area. So they have to, we'd have to go to the zoning board for variance from the area requirement. Where if this wasn't played, it would just simply be a special permit. Uh, so that's one instance of it, yes. Um, and there's been other such, you know, similar instances as that. I think people are maybe holding on and waiting to actually apply for the special permit, knowing that this is in the works. So once again, we're trying to do the outreach at this point, and let people know that this bylaw is, is gonna be brought to town meeting.
Could you go back up to some of the specifics as far as, uh, best practices? And let's see background permit process right here, yeah. Let's see right there. Yeah, so owner occupancy of one or other unit. Just making sure, 'cause that can get specific too. So it's not, uh, this bylaw is gonna be specific to an individual that owns the property, is always gonna be living on that property.
That's the intent.
And then the other accessory could be for a mother-in-law, a father, whoever it is, after maybe that person potentially passes, then that person could rent it to...
Anybody.
Anybody.
Well, that person would have to then own the...
Would still have to own it. And then, and then they could rent it to, you know, it doesn't have to be an elder person. It could be somebody that's just, as long as the owner is always on that property, and it doesn't become, um, a strictly landlord situation.
That's correct, and that's, thank you for mentioning that. That's an essential difference between the two-family and the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. In the two-family, there's no owner occupancy requirement, so both units could be rented out in theory.
Correct, okay, good.
That would not be allowable under this.
'Cause I think that's important. And then maintaining the look of a single, single-family dwelling. So say you have a two-acre lot, or a three-acre, a five-acre lot, and somebody wants to put an accessory dwelling on that property. Could that accessory dwelling, does that have to look like a garage in the back? Do you know what I'm saying? Does that...
No.
Maintain the look of a single-family dwelling? So if you had a five-acre lot, and you have a colonial house, and they wanna put a secondary guest-type house, would that house have to look like a shed? I'm just looking for some clarification of...
It could look like the house. I mean, you're comparing it really to the major, to the primary occupancy. It could be a smaller version, but it's more instead of, uh, you know, having a colonial house and then putting up...
A quonza.
A quonza, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. It's just a clarification as to what, maintain the look of a single-family dwelling, you wouldn't be putting, taking a house and then putting another house in front of it, or it would maybe be an addition off the back, or it would...
I think maintain the look of a single-family dwelling is more flexible a requirement than a thousand square feet. That's to have the board look at a specific proposal.
Right.
Look at it generally. I, I think what Marilyn and Norm just said was really the, the heart of it. Not to have a structure that doesn't look like it belongs on a lot. If it's a detached structure, if it's located, you know, where you would typically have a detached accessory structure, I think that would be in the spirit of this.
Right.
But that's not as hot of a requirement as the other ones. But I think the, the look, it's, it's to, to not make it look as if it is a, a apartment complex, or some other more intense type of housing, which is not this, not the purpose of this bylaw.
And I just wouldn't want somebody to look at, you know, if they have a house that is maybe set off off the road, then they put an accessory dwelling, you know, in front of it. And that, you know what I mean? And it doesn't, it doesn't maintain that aesthetic.
I think what's gonna happen here, which is tangentially related to a prior discussion, is that once people start to apply for these, I think we will have models of applications for people to look at, and to say, if you're thinking about this, this is what the board is, is used to seeing, maybe you wanna consider this as an example. Not that we start to work out some of the, um, some of the issues related to this type of bylaw, so I...
'Cause you don't wanna possibility of the main house being thirty feet back, and you wanna put something else in front of it, now, you know, building regs will...
Right, that's my point, is that it does. It doesn't look like all of a sudden we're squeezing two houses under one lot, that that secondary dwelling is in addition to the house, or it's coincides with a garage look in the back, or an offset garage, or a...
Or a responsible...
Be it a pool house, you know what I mean? You could have a little tiny house that could be a standalone dwelling. That looks like a pool house, it's just not...
I think if I'm, you know, most of, most of these aren't gonna be an extension of an existing house.
Or a remodel of an existing building.
Or possibly a remodel, yeah.
Right, yeah, okay.
Even, even just cost-wise. Because we, we, you know, when you say, I think about this accessory has to have its own kitchen. Okay, it has to have its own septic system, water supply, all of that. And when you're putting that in a separate building, it's gotta be a lot more expensive than just extending some water pipes.
Right, from an existing building, yeah.
There's a really good example of this in the paper today, in fact, and it's on Chandler Street in Worcester, and it's an old factory that has a very distinctive kind of facade to it. And, you know, right attached to it is a very modern-looking building. And in my eye, they don't, you know, they don't look the same, they don't match, so...
That's Worcester.
Right. Not in this town.
No, I like it, and I applaud everybody that's worked on this diligently, thank you. I think it's a very positive bylaw for our town.
Just one thing, you, you sent out the, uh, dwelling unit bylaw.
Yeah.
And on the first page, when I read it, it just, I don't know, maybe, just my mind doesn't work and, uh, it's functioning well. Accessory dwelling unit may be attached to a single-family dwelling and connected by a, an internal passageway. And I'm saying, oh, does that mean internal from the basement to the basement? It could.
I think, the idea, I discussed it with town council.
A tunnel?
No. I, I don't, internal just didn't sound right. I, I don't know, for some reason or other.
You don't have to, you don't have to go outside.
Yeah.
That's the idea.
So you couldn't have a pergola with a little roof where you have to walk out a door to a garage that is just, you know, you can see through it? So you have those breezeways, right? Correct, there are breezeways from a garage to a house, and all it is is a roof. Now, you would have to have walls on that, there would have to be walls and windows, and now you could have an entrance going right and left, and one goes into the garage, one goes into the house. But I think I, is that correct?
That's a good example of it.
Yeah.
That's a good example of it, yes, that's the intent.
You can walk from one to the other without a jacket, you know?
Yeah, I, I...
Throughout the year, yeah.
I totally agree. It's just internal, internal, just, I don't know.
It is a strange choice of words.
Yeah. All right.
Connected, I mean, could there be, yeah, continuous, contiguous?
Enclosed.
Enclosed.
I don't, I don't see trouble.
Right.
Well, Norm, you're on the head ad hoc subcommittee, so you're, you see all this kinda stuff all the time.
Yes. Well, and you see how we're going through.
Yes, I, I have.
Okay, next.
Do you know, oh, just real quick, I'm sorry. Can the, um, committee think of any negative feedback from the public that could come up with this bylaw? I'm just trying to think proactively ahead of time, has there been any negative feedback from anybody? Or is there any, is there any potential comeback?
I haven't heard anything. I haven't, I haven't really heard anything either way, to be perfectly honest with you.
I think we're also now introducing this to a broader public, having the committee having done its work, we're now trying to broaden the outreach on this. So that's a good, good thing to, yes, I wanna know what comes out.
Just be prepared, 'cause you just, I mean, you all realize people complain about everything, so somebody's gonna say something.
Yeah, next step of this is has to go to...
I, I know I've, uh, already said this a hundred times, but the only thing I'm worried about is Louis.
Oh. He'll have something.
He's, he's gonna stand up and say, we shouldn't be adopting this in the special town meeting, we should wait for the annual time.
Yeah, right.
But there's no, there's no policy, you say you can't do that in the fall? Okay. The zoning access, the zoning of the fall.
There's nobody that can say that we haven't been open, and we haven't been forthright, and we haven't put in public notices together, and everything else, so...
Nobody's, I don't think anybody ever said that, except for tonight. What is this, what happens to this now? Is the, uh, it has to have, it has to go to the selectman or something, or is it...
Uh, yeah.
Yes, I have to write a warrant article.
Okay, so you're gonna do the...
Yes, and that's circulated, just filed out with the town clerk as well.
Okay, that's fine, as long as I'm the chairman of the board, so I don't have to do it.
No, no, you don't have to do that, no.
It's very nice to have you know not to do that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, number ten, proposed economic development commission. Solicitation of membership from the planning board.
Well, for me, I'm under the table.
Yeah. Mr. Ron San Angelo sent out an email, which you have a copy of, so I guess I don't need to read it. And obviously, they're looking for a member of the planning board to serve on this thing, which, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm not sure whether he's even gonna make it fly. fly. From at least what I've heard so far, in whatever he has solicited from the public and that sort of thing, he's had two people interested in it, and that's it.
And it's really unfortunate, because I understand what he's trying to do, and I think it's a really good thing for the businesses of Rutland to be connected, and it's no different than every discussion we have, and every board, and every commission, and talking with each
And beyond that, the only thing I'll say is, I'm not going to do it, I'm on too many committees now. Same here. So, I think you had already said, no, you wouldn't. So that basically left you and Tim.
You know, and I'm, and I'm having, you know, at, at this point, even with the open space, you know, I'm meeting on the side with some people and having side-by conversations, but even getting to those open space meetings hasn't been on the top of my list, and I haven't been a good, doing a good job on that. If somebody wanted to take the open space, maybe I'll have fun on this one, but, because for me personally, being a business owner in town, I, not that I, you know, I'm just being honest, not that I'm, I'm not in favor of the open space, but I, I, there's no way I could do both, there's just no way. And if a planning board member, if we have a select board member that's there, if the planning board needed to make this happen, I think a business development committee is huge for this town. And I would do what I can to support it, but there's no way that I could do both open space and business development.
Hey guys, it's Leah.
So I guess, you know, we just get a blank from? At the present time?
Can you guys?
Leah, hey!
Yeah.
Hey, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board or anyone, but my understanding was that, um, Ron was, would love it if, like, a representative from planning board could be on, but if planning board, a representative from planning board cannot, if planning board can share with their contacts or knows of someone that might have, you know, some good planning experience or familiarity with planning, um, that would have time and interest, that that would be a, a much appreciated alternate.
I nominate Clee Blair.
There you go. No, um.
I'll nominate Jim Suzy.
You know, there, you know, that's a very good point, Leah, and, you know, maybe there are some other people that we could talk to as being a designee, and there are definitely some other business owners in town, and one, I would even say, it doesn't have to be a business owner, right? It's going to be somebody that's, um, willing to get involved. And, you know, I, I wonder if, and he was here tonight, Scott Day, he works for Bobby Hype, and he had mentioned that he and Bobby wanted to get more involved in these types of things, be it whatever, so I'll, I'll mention it to him. He was in here earlier, and, you know, he, he wants to get involved in these types of things, and maybe he might be a, an option as a designee. And then would that person come in, talking, talk with the planning board, Leah? You know, have a conversation, saying this is what we're looking for, for help and assistance, and would you be able to do this for us?
Yeah, so I, you'd have to, I mean, kind of ratify Ron, I would assume, to see what his, and I think it would kind of be at the, the decision of the planning board, um, it's really just trying to get, um, some involvement, and, you know, obviously, having representatives from boards and commissions is helpful, but it's tough, because there's so many boards and commissions and subcommittees in town currently that require representatives from, you know, select board, Kong Kong, planning, um, ICOM, you know, everybody, you know, those groups are kind of spread thin already, so it's just kind of even at the, at the very least, extending it to your networks, um, and if, you know, getting the word out, it wouldn't hurt to ask them to commit and, you know, report back, I would assume, but that would have to be a conversation, I think, with Ron, or, you know, the planning, among planning board and Dave, um, and just figure out how you want it to work, you know?
I would think it would go to the, directly to the town administrator, link in his name.
San Angelo, Ron?
Yeah, but, I mean, because we don't really know, I don't have a lot of background information on exactly what he would be looking for.
Well.
I think he's just looking to tie all the businesses together.
You know, I, I guess, and again, I just, I just have, you know, got kind of some of my, my own personal feelings. I would, and this is, I'm not asking you to do anything, but I think this kind of commission needs some people with particularly, I'm going to call it entrepreneurial spirit, which you obviously have, you know?
And that's why I'd love to be involved, because I, I mean, this?
Clones and clones of Kevin. Yeah, and it used to be like Bonnie Vesey, you know? Well, that's, you know, that's another idea that, you know, Dave had, is how about trying to base this on the old RBA? Yeah. Uh, if he, if they could somehow rather kind of activate that and give them a charge as this economic development.
I mean, there are people in this town that are trying to stop businesses that are active and aggressive and energetic and young and all that stuff, and that's, you're right, I mean, that's what a lot of this town is, is missing, is, you know, some people to bring up that next level of, the, the RBA, the Rutland Business Association is technically active today?
I don't think really. No, I think they, they really haven't been lately. I think since Addison and Redfield left. Yeah. It just kind of faded. Yeah. So we need another Addison in town here. And I feel that, that the progress that Leah is making, being, you know, at a lot of these meetings, she's getting there very quickly. But, no, I, I, I know quite a few people in town that have businesses, and love to see them get involved, but time.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's the other thing.
That's the big thing right now, is time.
No, you have someone who wants to be here.
Let me see, somebody remotely wishes to speak?
I sent the message to Scott, as I mentioned before, that he was, he was interested in getting more involved. Hey, Scott, if you can listen, hear me now, I brought your name up a couple minutes ago about a potential position. The town administrator has put out a request to gather a group of people to get a handle on Rutland's business administration, or businesses. So Rutland Business Administration, as of today, we don't even know is an active thing or not, but the town administrator is hoping that we can get people to be more involved in the planning board member, or a, or a designee for a three-year term on this, is something that we would be looking to see if you'd have some interest in, being, um, working for the business, being involved in the business that you're in day-to-day, and getting more involved in the town.
Um, absolutely, because, um, I would definitely be interested in sitting down and talking and figuring out, uh, exactly what you guys are looking for. I'd like to make sure that I have a better grip on what we're talking about before I could, uh, commit to something.
Are you, are you watching right now, online?
Yes, I am.
So if you scroll back up, Dave, and you can actually read real quick, or if it's not on there, the, what the town administrator is looking for, and you can just read that pretty quick, it's, it's not specific because it doesn't exist, right? So, you know, you, along with other people, will be charged in getting the specifics about this economic development commission, and, um, kind of working together to form it.
Okay. Um, yeah, let me just put a little bit of thought to it, and I'll definitely get back to you guys. You know, with, given the situation we went through with that last store deal, I'd definitely like to get involved and find ways to, you know, resolve issues like that for set business owners in our town. So, yeah, let me, uh, just put some thought and see what I have for time, uh, to give, obviously, but I definitely want to get more involved in the, whatever I can in this town.
So moving forward, then, if the town administrator, can you maybe get some more detail? This is pretty, this is great, but it's still a little bit vague.
Mr. Gray?
I would suggest you go back through the last several select board agendas, because there was an element on the agenda when Ron did an entire presentation about this committee to the select board. So once you can find the right meeting, you can go watch it on YouTube or, or video on demand, it doesn't matter, but there you can actually find the presentation that he did, which gives more detail about what Ron believes this committee will do.
And just to piggyback on Peter's comment, I think there's a strong feel that the committee will be doing.
Yes.
Because as this board is maxed out with responsibilities and other boards and commissions, staff is maxed out as well, so I think we're not looking for a board that's going to be assigning tasks to staff with some kind of timeline expectation of deliveries. I think we're looking to, to share and work with this kind of a committee, if it comes to be where they're doing things. So, you know, doing, because that's what it's about here, in this case, as much as this board is doing, so I think, you know, the charge may not be fully fleshed out, but it's not, it's not just an advisory, an advisory group. I think there's an expectation that there's some work that this group will be doing on various issues, as far as I understand it. If that's not the case, I think we probably need to get a handle on that sooner than later.
Well, Scott, I think what you can do for your own sake is check out that meeting, or even touch base with Beth. I would think that Beth should be able to maybe even forward over that presentation to anybody that had asked for it. So Scott could check with Beth in the town administrator's office and ask her maybe to forward, I don't want to speak for her, but I would think that that presentation should be readily available and could be forwarded on, and then you watch the presentation and see if it's something you're interested in.
I think that's something that should be broadcasted, get out there.
Right.
And repeat it over and over again.
And it's great, he did all that presentation, but if it was only shown at the select board meeting?
Yeah.
You know, maybe it could be put on YouTube and broadcasted by the planning board. I mean, again, these are the things I'm happy to put it out there on, on social media and say, hey, can everybody please watch this? This is the town, anybody interested, please let us know.
You got to get it out there. Not everybody was looking at the selectman's meeting, so.
Would it be feasible to reach out to Ron himself and maybe say?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. He would, I'm sure he would love for somebody to call him and say, I'm interested in this, that's what he's been waiting for.
Yeah.
Uh, Norm just mentioned at the very beginning, maybe you weren't on the call, he's had two people show interest, so if you show interest directly to TA San Angelo, I'm, I don't speak for him again, but I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to you.
He'll have you, he'll have you sign on the dotted line in five minutes.
Yeah, I gotta, gotta believe he'd invite you into his office very quickly to talk about it, so.
And I do believe there is somebody that you know is all, already on there.
Okay.
So, it'll be good.
Okay, yeah, but, uh, I'll get on that tomorrow, I'll try to get in touch with him and see if I can set something up to get more of a full description of what would be expected and whatnot, and get on the right path of doing this.
That's awesome, Scott. I think that's perfect for what you and I have talked about in the past, and you wanting to get more involved, so thank you for that.
Well, absolutely, thank you guys for, uh, for, 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 I mean, I thought about it again, Kevin, but, um, I gave my name pop up, so I can pay more attention to what you're saying. Um, so, excellent, thank you guys for now.
Thank you, appreciate your time, Scott.
I'll jump to Ron, hopefully tomorrow, and get something rolling.
Sounds great.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, number eleven, open space, committee, flyer, and a packet. Any discussion on that?
This comes Saturday, ten o'clock, library.
I am meeting to Thursday morning, um, to discuss just one-on-one, um, some more stuff about the community garden moving forward, so hopefully I'll have a little more details, and then from, I'll be at this meeting as well, um, for the open discussion about community garden and anything and everything else that we can, we can bring up. But one thing that I want to have on the top of the list is the community garden, and see how we can move forward doing that, um, in conjunction with whomever's willing to help out.
Well, um, I know there are, we're hoping there's going to be a pretty good turnout, and, uh, how should I say it? Lucky for me, for, I've got, um, one of the projects that I am, I'm going to come up to see Dave and try to get a, a map on the zoning map of some sort, and, uh, trying to put it together for Saturday, so hopefully people will come in. I want to hear their opinions.
Was this on the town sign?
It's on the town's site, yes. It's also was, it's on the town's website, on the homepage, I believe it was distributed as, um, on the Facebook page, and yeah.
Okay, I'm sure, yeah.
Maybe it's an email blast as well, but this has been circulated widely, as far as I understand it, um.
I like the part about coffee and donuts.
Yeah.
There's an old, there's an old saying that says, if you want them to come, give them refreshments.
Yeah, and it's going to be raining, from what I gather, so unfortunately, it's the Fall Festival of Arts and, and.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, so, but it's still only Tuesday, so, yeah, one can only hope. Okay, number twelve, Demontong, right away to special permit decision review.
I don't have those ready yet, I am working on those, and those will be ready for next Monday, as well as the other item that we discussed previously.
Uh-huh, Lynnwood Road is the same.
That's right.
Okay, believe it or not.
End of our trip.
That's the end of the agenda. Does anyone else have anything to, and we'll go to the board. All in silence. Yes, silence, move to adjourn.
Second.
You in favor?
Aye.
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 Nine seventeen.
Oh, my lord.